Welcome to the Arlington School Committee. Today is Thursday, June 9th. Do we have any public participation? No? No? Okay. Okay. Then we can go right on to the literacy and ELL Park presentation. Oh, I'm sorry. Is he here?
He's not here. He's not here, but you want to mention what we're going to do.
Oh, I'm sorry. Let me just, sorry. No, you can sit down. But you said to sit down. I just wanted to mention a slight change. Dr. Janger is going to come by for a few minutes to talk about a slight amendment to the calendar, and we're going to sort of take that out of order as he's available. So when he, after this presentation, but when he comes in, we will take him out of there. Thanks.
Great. Good evening. I'm Lynda Hanson, and this is...
Tammy McBride. Nice to see you all.
And we are the District Literacy Elementary K-5 Literacy Coaches. And we came to you this evening to talk to you a little bit just about what's going on in terms of curriculum in the elementary literacy arena. And also, we had talked a lot last fall about kind of the pros and cons of Park versus MCAS. And so, right after the students took the ELA Park this year, we surveyed them, and we thought it would be interesting to find out from the students themselves, kind of the answer to some of the questions we had. How stressful was it? How different was it from what they experienced before? So, we put together a little presentation for you that, we'll talk about that as well. So, we'll go ahead and get started. And I'm actually going to need my other glasses. So we'll start out with the Park feedback from the students, and then we'll move on to how we feel like this is all connected to the curriculum. So, just as a reminder, one of the elementary schools took the computer-based test. That was the Bishop School. And all the other elementary schools took the paper and pencil test. We'll start off with the Bishop results, and then move to the Dallin results, and then talk about some curriculum connections and some reflections from there. So we'll start off with Bishop. So the Bishop students took the assessment on an iPad with a keyboard, and one of the key questions that we all had was, what was this timed nature of the test? How was that going to feel to the students? So the first question we asked them was, did you finish in the amount of time given? And the yellowish-green, pea-green on top there are the students that finished on time. And then the next level is almost finished. And for some of them, they finished maybe one of the three days on time, or two of the three, but not all. And then the very bottom there were the students that felt like they really had a lot left after the 90-minute time allotments. The next question we asked was, was this test similar to the kind of work we do in class? Now, we don't want work, schoolwork, to feel like tests, so, you know, there's a variance there. But we wanted to know how similar it felt, particularly the essay portion of what they were doing. And on the top there, you see that was very similar. And then that whole big orange section in the middle was kind of similar to what they do. And then at the bottom, the red was, didn't feel very similar to students. So you can see, in third and fourth grade, there's maybe 10 to 14 percent that felt it wasn't very similar. But everybody else said that it was kind of, or very similar, to work, the work they do in class. Then we tried to get at that question in a different way, and say, not how similar did it feel, but did you feel prepared for the kind of work that you were expected to do on the test? And as curriculum people, this felt good to us, that more than half of the kids felt very prepared for the kind of work they were being asked to do. Again, then on the bottom, the large orange section was kind of prepared, and just the tiny little bit at the bottom were students who reported not feeling very prepared for the kind of work they did. Then we were curious to find out how these students would compare the Park to the MCAS test. Now, the Bishop students, there were two factors that were different, right? It's a different test, but they were also taking it using technology. So, we're not sure how much of that factored into their answer here. But the smallest percentage felt like the Park was harder than the MCAS. A very large section in the middle felt that the Park and MCAS were about the same. And then, on the bottom, and interestingly, in fifth grade, more than half of the kids felt the Park was easier. And we're not, I'm just kind of curious how much of that had to do with the fact that they were taking it on the iPad. How comfortable were you typing your essay? This was another big question that parents and teachers had. How was the keyboarding aspect going to feel? And again, if you look, you know, the large majority felt very comfortable typing. The orange section at the bottom there, kind of comfortable. And then the very bottom, not comfortable. So it was interesting that really, it was like 99 percent of the fifth graders felt kind of, or very comfortable. About 20 percent of fourth graders were the least uncomfortable with the typing. And I'm wondering if that was because they were typing more and longer essays, but not feeling as proficient as the fifth graders. In third grade, there was only about 10 percent of kids that felt not as comfortable, but I don't think they typed as much as the fourth graders. And then, how did you like taking the test on the iPad as compared to a paper and pencil test? No surprise, the large majority really enjoyed taking it on the iPad. You have a chunk at the top that really didn't have a preference. The vast majority in the middle felt like they'd prefer the iPad or a computer. And then some at the bottom preferred paper and pencil. Again, you have that 20 percent of fourth grader, so that might be the keyboarding issue again. So overall, the majority of students completed the test in the given time. The majority thought similar, or kind of similar, to the kind of work they do in school. The majority felt very prepared, and a very small percentage not prepared. In terms of comparing the two formats, Park seemed easier or the same as MCAS. Comfort level typing, we just talked about, and the majority preferred the iPad. I will say, we did ask an open-ended question at the bottom, too, to ask the students what advice they would give the people who wrote the test. And we found, you know, kids say the darndest things. We have lots of interesting results there. And we will put that together for you. We had to do this ironically, a paper and pencil test, because all the iPads were taken by the testing situation. And students at this grade don't use Google Forms, so we're still tabulating those results. But even though the majority of students did complete the test in the given time, there were still quite a few kids who said that the time factor was stressful. And, you know, kids are very compassionate, and so even if they themselves finished on time, they didn't think it was fair that not everybody finished on time. They loved, loved, loved the videos, wanted more videos. And they said some questions were asked in a confusing way, and many, many students said that. And I have to agree. I think some of the questions are kind of phrased in a confusing way. Many of them didn't like the Part A-B questions, you know, the multiple choice, what's the answer, and then how did you find the answer? But they were very insightful about saying things like, they didn't give us enough of the context of, you know, what gave you the evidence? They said, a couple of words isn't enough. They should put the whole sentence, and things like that. And then the grade-three students didn't like the earphones. They said they hurt their ears. So those were just kind of some of the anecdotal things that they said.
So, to make this a true TBT Throwback Thursday, we'll talk a little bit about the good old paper and pencil-based testing. We looked at the Dallin School students to give us feedback on how they felt with this format of the Park test. So, similar questions. The first question was, did they finish in the amount of time given? And as you can see, the overwhelming majority of the students did finish in the amount given, with a smaller percent almost finished and very minimal, with a lot of, a lot left. And again, looking at whether the test was similar to the kind of work they did in class. This is a little different. If you can see, the majority felt like it was kind of similar, as opposed to very similar. And I know Lynda talked a little bit about how necessarily, we don't necessarily want classrooms to feel like testing zones, so just really interested in hearing more about that from them. They did touch a little bit upon that in the open response questions as well. And then, as far as being prepared for the kind of work that was on the Park testing, there's a mix between the majority of students feeling very prepared and kind of prepared. And only grade three had a small percentage that felt not prepared at all. And just curious to think a little bit about, if you notice, as the grade levels go on and the complexity of the test items increase, you see that there's less that felt very prepared, and more that felt kind of prepared. So just thinking about how the tasks increase from grade level to grade level. And again, we asked students to compare their experience with the Park and MCAS. And in grade four, there's a small percent that felt that Park was easier, and a small percent that felt Park was harder, with the majority landing in Park and MCAS being very similar. And similarly, in grade five as well. So...
What's that? I think you go on from here.
So just to summarize the paper and pencil-based testing overall, again, as far as the time component, the majority of students were able to finish in the amount of time given. The majority thought the work was somewhat similar as to the work they do in class, as opposed to very similar. The majority felt very prepared, or kind of prepared, for this assessment. And the majority felt that Park and MCAS were very similar. And again, just one interesting item that Lynda and I want to explore and think more about is that the computer-based test takers felt that Park was easier than the MCAS in higher numbers. So thinking about, is that because of the technology piece, or really getting at the heart of that from students? So, obviously, at the heart of what we do is all about students, so hearing from them and their lens with this experience is helping Lynda and I to really think more deeply and push our thinking around the implementation of the Common Core standards in our literacy units of study in classrooms. So we know that the Common Core standards should prepare students to be prepared for this type of assessment, and for these type of tasks, and also be engaging. So, we're really using this feedback from students and using their voices to help us reflect on how are we doing right now in our literacy curriculum, to address the Common Core standards, and really to give students experiences in their everyday life that prepare them for this test, as opposed to having it feel like a separate test prep, that these are really embedded in their reading and writing units of study every day. So what we'd like to do tonight is sort of give you a little bit of a day in the life for reading and writing for our students, and give you a snapshot of the types of experiences that they're being exposed to within our units, that both address the Common Core standards and also prepare them for tasks like this, that are also motivating and engaging. So I'm going to begin with the writing curriculum. Over the past several years, Arlington has been rolling out and implementing the Lucy Calkins Writing Workshop units of study. This is a very robust program that provides students with experiences in all genres of writing, including opinion, informative, and narrative writing. Our teachers are reporting to us and feeling really energized about these writing units coming alive in their classrooms. They've appreciated the professional development that's happened around these, and particularly teachers that have participated in their lab site experiences. They're really sharing that they feel like they're able to have these lessons in their classroom with fidelity, with really great results. So students are excited, but teachers are as well. A particular focus this year was on the literary essay units under the opinion genre for grades four and five. And in, within those units, students are given the task of analyzing short stories, where they kind of grow their own ideas about themes and character motivations. And from those stories, they push their own thinking to create a thesis statement from the reading that's followed by evidence and reasons from the text to support that thesis. So for example, if they were reading a short story like The Marble Champ, they might notice that Lupe, the main character, shows perseverance. They kind of come up with three reasons how that's shown, and each paragraph then supports with evidence those reasons. And I think the best part about it is, at the end, the concluding paragraph is, okay, I've read this, I've shown my thinking through the author's point of view, but what does it mean to me, and what does it mean to the world? So the closing might sound something like, sometimes in life, you might want to improve or reach a goal, and you need to show perseverance, just as Lupe did in The Marble Champ. So kind of, what new thinking am I growing, and how does that matter to the world? And just one side note, as I was traveling through buildings during the Park exam, classrooms that I've been in, students were pulling me aside, saying, Mrs. McBride, we wrote an essay! It was just like literary essay! So hearing from them and their comfort immediately after taking the test, making the curriculum connection was, was really nice to hear. Another particular focus in grade four and five is the information writing units. And within these units, students, again, are reading and researching across multiple sources, so primary sources, video clips, articles, and they're gathering information to produce an informative essay. Within those essays are embedded all styles of writing. So for example, part of the essay might be straight facts and teaching on a topic, but also there will include mini-stories, so personal narratives of an experience that they've had with this informational topic. And the last piece has some sort of perspective component. So if they were writing an informational essay on the Arctic, they might have a letter or a postcard from a researcher who's in the Arctic, writing home about the conditions that they're experiencing, the things that they're seeing. So even though it's an informative piece, it has other styles of writing embedded within. And just before I pass the mic to Lynda, one of our goals this summer is to work with Denny Conklin, our social studies director, and teachers to really focus on taking the social studies content of immigration for fourth grade, and Revolutionary War for fifth grade, and really aligning and integrating that with these writing units of study. So...
Great. All right. So then, just a few thoughts on what we're doing in the reading curriculum. So in third, so we've done some work, again, in upgrading and adopting new units of study in reading. So I'm just going to briefly show you one from grades three, four, and five. And a lot of the work we're doing is around what are being referred to as SEPAs, the Curriculum Embedded Performance Assessments, that come at the end of the units of study, that really help kids integrate and synthesize the learning they've done, and as Tammy keeps saying, like, grow their own new ideas that they can support. So in third grade, just one quick example is something called the Home Unit, where home is the theme, and what makes a home special is what kids are thinking about. They do some close reading for, with several different picture books. And then their performance assessment at the end is seeing if they can use the writer's craft elements that they've learned from each of the authors in the unit, and write their own piece about what makes their home special, kind of borrowing and mimicking some of the writing author's craft that they've seen and explored in the unit. And then in fourth grade, they do a leadership unit, where they're studying the concept of leadership, and the inquiry question is, what makes someone a good leader? So again, they study in-depth four different picture books, about four different leaders, Jackie Robinson, Amelia Earhart, Nelson Mandela, and a fictional leader Wesley. And then, at the end, they come back together, and they synthesize their thinking across these four texts in a fairly elaborate, kind of complex way there, identifying a leader, describing the person's accomplishments, and why they're important. But then they have to go beyond that, and say, name and explain, so two values that make this person a good leader. And then, again, building on top of that, consider which other person that we studied would be the most respected by the leader you're writing about. So something they haven't had direct experience with, this is where they build on the knowledge and the things that they've studied. And then, in the end, write a newspaper article about that. And finally, in fifth grade, a current event unit, clean water. So they read an article, they watch a video clip about struggling to get clean water in Ethiopia, and then they go through a unit of study, and they, at the end, they look at insights that they gained from both the article and the video, pick three, name several struggles about clean water, identify one solution, and then talk about what you would need to do to kind of make that happen. So one of the things that we did, we've heard a little bit about students' perspective and curriculum perspective, but at the last professional development for fifth-grade teachers, they had a choice of this clean water unit or another unit on slavery, and we asked teachers to just talk about the pros and cons from their experience teaching it for the first time. So I just wanted to read a few of the pros that teachers felt out of this unit on clean water. They felt like it was great because it connected to the science unit of study. Kids had a lot of background knowledge about water. They could use diverse media and video clips. Knowledge of facts versus shouting out opinions. Open students' eyes to the world around them. Ability to connect to current events, like the Michigan water crisis. They liked the letters to the editor component. Ability to connect the subject matter with opinion writing. The topic was pertinent, and the students were immediately engaged. Cyclical pattern of the lessons between the books. So we're looking for, you know, to ensure that these units that we're developing really are engaging and motivating for students, and making sure that that's the case. So just to sum it all up, this is what we've been aiming to do, provide students with the experiences they need to grow their skills in the areas of close reading, academic discourse, analyzing texts, synthesizing ideas from multiple sources, and writing with evidence. And our overall goal is really for students to develop their own thinking and insights, and to communicate their ideas effectively within their communities.
And so Lynda and I are really passionate to continue to refine this work and identify ways to better support teachers as well with this high level of expectation. And again, at the heart of it is really focusing on implementing these Common Core standards in a way that are motivating and socially engaging with students. All of what we've talked about tonight with reading and writing. We recently went to see Dr. Nancy Fry with Dr. Chesson, and she talked about how reading and writing floats on a sea of talk. So really, these units are also very social, where students are engaging in conversation that then supports them sharing their own thinking. So, we're excited.
Yeah. And maybe one final, final comment, and then we'll stop and see if there are any questions. But there was an article in The Globe recently about standardized testing, and one of the sayings that they pulled out, I thought was very pertinent to the thinking that we're doing around the new testing that's coming along, and rethinking the role of standardized testing. And it's, I guess, it's an economist's saying, when a measure becomes a target, it ceases to be a good measure. And I feel like we, this, this whole harmless, kind of little period of time we have here, it was really so nice to see. You could just feel the much more relaxed nature of the teachers and the students. And it just kind of feels like it's really going to be important to see how we can continue to carry that on, even after this whole harmless period ends. So I think, you know, our work is really to make sure that our teaching is doing what we need it to do, and the testing can just be that. It's just like a dipstick, a moment in time, and then we kind of move on. So, that's our presentation for you this evening.
Does I have a clarificatory question before we move on? The student surveys that you did, was it just for the ELA portion of the Park? It wasn't for the math portion as well?
Right. Because we felt like we really wanted to focus on just what was different, and, you know, specific to the ELA.
Okay. Great. Thanks. Questions? Comments? Mr. Hayner?
Talking about preparing the students in reading and stuff like that, is part of the emphasis also on content reading, social studies, math? And, I mean, social studies and science have a tremendous concentration of vocabulary words, intense right at the beginning, unlike novels and other forms of literature and stuff. So, could you briefly comment on that?
So absolutely, and I think a lot of reading comprehension we're learning comes from really just background knowledge. And so we, I think where we are right now is also just seeing that we need to make way in the curriculum for a lot more social studies and science work. And so we are looking to, as Tammy mentioned, partner with social studies this summer to, to really start working on integrated units of study with social studies and ELA. And the next phase would be looking at science, too. As FAWSS is rolling out, it's still pretty new for the teachers and brand-new to us. But our, we intend to work with them to really look at those units of study and say, how can we bring this literacy, reading comprehension, writing lens to those content units?
And I assume that, first off, I should, your presentation was fantastic, and I apologize for not mentioning that at the beginning. The, the content books have glossaries in the back, for the most part. Hopefully, they've changed. I don't remember very many glossaries in math books, other than...
There are nowadays.
Great. It's good to hear. It's really good to hear, because, I mean, I remember telling the kids, when you see, sometimes the word in science and social studies would be highlighted, and that was a clue to go back to the glossary. We didn't have them in the math books back then, so I'm glad to hear that. Thank you.
Mr. Sleipn?
You know, with the new electronic technology, you don't need the glossary, you just touch the word.
As long as you have electronics.
As long as you have the...
Glossary built in.
The glossary built in, or the software attached to that. So, this is great. I love the data. When I opened up the, you know, the presentation, I thought, wow, this is fascinating. Do you know, and I guess it's not your role to answer this question, because you're elementary folk, so I'm going to throw it through the air to whoever might want to answer it from the administration. Do we have similar responses from middle school ELA?
We have not yet finished getting the surveys done from middle school. Their testing cycle was much longer because they had the science as well. And I have to say, although they did a phenomenal job, testing 450 or 430 students at a time was, so those people have just taken a breath, and then we'll get similar data from them.
Well, yeah, yeah. It was, it's more complicated, because you have to extend the paper out on the electronic, where the paper and pencil can be done in one sitting. So, but I, I was fascinated by the way that they were responding relative to how prepared they were, and how comfortable they were between the two...
We'll be asking the same questions from middle school.
Yeah. I'm really looking forward to that. It was so informative. I'm glad you did this. Reading and writing floats on a sea of talk? That's a great line.
She was phenomenal. And I, and I also think that that also ties in, what you heard them talk about a lot, was the integration of the reading and writing. You know, if I can remember back that far, when I was in elementary school, reading was a separate topic for writing. They never were really integrated. And Lucy Calkins really talks about that integration. And when kids write, then you say, well, why would an author do that when they read? So how would you, how would that connect to what you're doing in writing? But also, the talking is critically important for students that are behind the benchmark. Because if you think about a third-year student that's behind the benchmark, how are they going to have a discussion with closed texts? And what they do is, they used mentor texts and read-aloud texts, where the, so their, the conversation is, what is similar to what kids, other kids would be doing in closed reading. So it starts to build those skills, even if their reading skills are behind.
Excellent. Thank you. This is great. Thank you.
Can I actually add one? So we did survey the teachers as well, and we'll pull those together for you, maybe for the fall. But we thought it was, it would be interesting to have the teacher perspective as well, as to what they thought, how they thought.
Great.
Yes? Dr. Allison Abbey?
Thank you very much for the presentation. It was fascinating. I'm looking forward to hearing the comments from the students. I think that sounds really interesting. And then, the other thing is, I hope that we can come back once we actually have the results from Park, and correlate, for example, how many questions were left unanswered to see how many students actually didn't finish. I mean, assuming that you can make that, that connection. Because I'm, the time nature of the Park test is something that has concerned me since they began talking about it, and I'd just like to have a sense of that. I feel like the students do. It doesn't seem fair for someone not to finish because they run out of time.
So, the Department of Education is holding kind of sneak previews of MCAS 2.0 at the end of June. And part, one of the questions they had asked was, do you think the new test should be timed, generously timed, or untimed? So I'll be curious to see what, it's an indication of what direction they're going in, not, you know, kind of exact formats. But I'll be curious to see myself where they're going with that.
Yes?
Just a comment, this is to answer Dr. Allison Abbey's question. I don't think the Park results are going to be granular enough that you're going to be able to pick out anything based on the unanswered questions. Unfortunately, their summary results being presented through the consortium, and the depth of the data that I've seen, at least this year, from Park districts hasn't been quite as deep as it is for MCAS. So, that's another reason why I'm happy to see us moving to 2-0 next year. And on the electronic testing, you really have a different question, because everybody's not getting the same questions. It's more iterative. So, you can't tell that somebody finished question 35, and somebody didn't. It's just that this iterative assessment runs out of time, and then stops playing.
Another, since we're on the time, I'll say one more thing. Some of the student, individual students' responses were, they actually liked the timed factor of it, because then you were just done, and you could just move on with your day. And they, some of them felt like it had gone on a long time before, and this way, they could just move on.
Yes? Dr. Ready?
Well, I also want to say thank you. It was a great presentation, and it's good to see how our students are feeling about this, as we go into this new era of testing. But my comment is actually really to, a different role that Lynda plays in our district. And she, when she walks from that table over to that table, she's going to move over as a president. And this is going to be her last meeting in that role, and I just want to acknowledge her leadership these last years. She's been a terrific partner and collaborator as we've worked through a lot of problems. Her leadership has been truly outstanding. And I think tonight, you saw actually some glimmers of the kinds of analysis that she does that's affected. When we looked at GIC, we looked at salary scales. I mean, she has an enormous talent in being able to aggregate data in very, very... very, very clear and meaningful ways. But, you know, that's only one skill. Her real skill is that she's just been a tremendous leader and has served both the district and her membership well. And I do want to thank her publicly and acknowledge that, as she's sort of moving into this next phase. But the good news is, we're going to get more of her as literacy. As you can see, this is good.
Thank you very much, Dr. Bodie. I, I mean, I think it really has been a very challenging, but also very gratifying, four years as president. And I do feel like we've formed a lot of great partnerships. And I can just look across the committee, too, and think about work on the foundation budget, work on the charter cap, work on budgets and schools, you know, just like right down the road, work on the community surveys. And, and I do feel like, you know, with many of the members of the committee, we've, we've also been able to collaborate and work very well together. And I think ultimately, that's how we in Arlington have tried to make our best, do the best with the kind of policies, we, education policies we've been getting from the state and federal government, and really try and always do it in a way that works best for the students and, and faculty in Arlington. So, I look forward to my continued work in the district. And thank you for those kind words.
So, now we're going to take out of order, thank you very much. It was really, if we can ask Dr. Jangor to come up. And what we should do is pull up the calendar. We're not going to vote on it now, but just sort of, yeah, look at it, because there's a small addition. Dr. Jangor is going to explain a little bit of his rationale for this small change. But actually, we hope to invite him back in the fall to give us a full-fledged sort of vision of how conferences might be different next year.
First, can I just publicly thank Linda, myself?
Mm-hmm.
So, do you want me to just talk?
Yes, actually, tell us what the change is first, and then you can talk about rationale.
So, as is often the case, education is, is easy compared to managing time and space. And so, this is a schedule issue, and the schedule issue has to do with parent-teacher conferences, essentially. And I don't have the dates in front of me, I sent them to you. But what we're asking in the simple version is to add one more early release date for parent-teacher conference time. Actually, let me read it in a more detailed way. So, I can just read it here.
I think, is it the November 15th date? Is that right?
This is the November 15th and the November 29th.
November 15th and November 29th would be...
It was on the calendar before. I can't remember.
No, November, I'm sorry.
We have October dates.
Oh, we have October. Okay.
We were doing last year's...
So, last year, we had October dates. The year before that, we had November and December dates. Based on overwhelming response in surveys, we'd like to move back to November dates. We would like to have, and I believe the dates are November 15th for an early release, November...
29th.
20th for the evening, correct?
Right.
Seventeen, Dr. Jangor, is the evening.
Okay, November 17th for the evening. Sorry. There was some back and forth to try to keep it off of school committee dates. And then, November 29th for the early release.
School committee date.
And we would also like to add a spring, or a spring semester, so it would be in February, conference date for evening conferences. What was the date for that?
Well, it was an open house. It's, whether it's going to be open house...
Open house. I'm sorry, right, for open houses.
We didn't put that on the calendar, because it was going to be sort of a slash open-house conference night.
Okay. Sorry, I'm being horribly inarticulate. So, that's the dates. The rationale for it goes like this. We've surveyed the parents every year, and it's teachers, for the last three years, on parent-teacher conferences. And we come back with sort of a mixed review. The way it works right now, we have five-minute conferences for one early release and two evenings. That produces about 72 five-minute slots. The problem is that a teacher who is teaching a full load, who are many of the teachers who the people most want to see, is teaching 100 to 130 students. So, every year, at 10 o'clock, we open the registration, and it's like trying to get tickets to name your favorite band. And by about 1:00, I'm getting angry emails from people that afternoon that they can't get in. The second thing is that the teachers and the parents have really different senses of the purposes of student-teacher conferences. So, when we surveyed them, from the teacher's perspective, they would like to use conferences as a time to talk to those parents who they need to have some conversation with. There are, for students who are seriously struggling, other venues. You have guidance meetings, team meetings. But there's a large group of students where the teachers would like to have a constructive conversation with the parents. And five minutes is not enough for that. They would like that to be, that time to be focused more on parents who want to really see them about something that they need to talk to them about, or feel as important. And teachers to be able to talk to parents who they'd like to have a conversation with that they feel is important, and they'd like there to be 10 minutes. Parents, when we had the conversation, the school council, and when you read the survey, many of them had a very different perspective on the purpose and reason for parent-teacher conferences. As many of them said, "I thought good parents went to conferences." And thinking that good parents went to conferences, many felt obligated to go. And many valued the opportunity to have a quick face-to-face conversation and get to know. That's why I always went. I was like, not worried about my kids, but I wanted to just meet the teacher and have a conversation with them. Didn't have to be very long. The problem with that is that to meet both of those needs would require hours and hours either pulled out of instructional time, or teachers to come back in the evening. So, we had a conversation in which, as the parents put it, they really wanted a little bit of a paradigm shift. And the idea was that we would focus on having parent-teacher conferences be 10 minutes long. We would ask teachers to identify some parents they thought were appropriate, to talk to and reach out to them. And we would ask parents who felt that they had a reason to talk to the teachers, to make those appointments. And we would ask them on an honor codes, on their honor, to try not to schedule conferences with more than two teachers. But we'll let people schedule what they think is appropriate, because I think that's fair. Given that, if you have only six hours of conferences, I'm sorry, then we wanted to take one of the evening conference dates and switch that to the spring. So, the idea was to create two different venues. One for parents, I'm not doing this very well, one for parents to get to know the teachers. So, the idea is, if you just want to meet the teachers and get to know the teachers, you would come to open house in the fall, you would come to a reception that would be held during faculty meeting time in December, and you would come to an open house at the beginning of the second semester. That also solves the problem of second semester classes, where the parents never get to meet or hear from the teacher. So, if you're a parent who just wants to know what's going on in the school, you now have three times to check in and have some face time with your teachers. But you're not taking up those little five-minute slots. In order to deal with that, then we now only have one evening time and one early release time. And that's not enough, particularly with 10-minute slots. So, we wanted to add one more early release time. So, with the two early releases and the late nighttime, you'd have six hours of conferences. And I have to do the math in my head every time, but it's 36 slots. If you felt, and this is really up to the school committee, I think, that the slots were particularly important, I would encourage you to make it a noon release, which would give us an additional 12 slots. So, instead of 372 five-minute slots, we will have 36 or 48 10-minute slots. But the 10-minute slots will be focused on students who, where there's a reason to have a conversation. So, that's basically the proposal.
So, actually, on this calendar, the noon is...
We put them at noon.
We put them at noon.
That's what you want.
So, then it's 48 minutes.
That's, that's what it's on here. Yeah, let's, questions and comments, Mr. Hayner?
I just, this is directed to the superintendent. I assume we're still within the required hours of class. Thank you. That's my only concern.
My question's on the November 17th date. If, if you were working to avoid the school committee meeting night, how come we landed on a school committee night?
We talked about that, that issue. Because this is going to be much more limited conferencing and longer ones, we thought that the parking wouldn't be that challenging. But, and there's a strong preference of teachers doing conferences on Thursday nights, and there's not much room in, in November to do anything else. And the reason why there's a strong preference by teachers for that, as you can imagine, that's why we're doing it on Thursday nights, too. You can, you know, you're up late, and then you come in for one more day.
Well, you're doing...
Also, can I just go through the schedule for a second? The end of the first term is the 10th. That's a Thursday. The next day is Veterans Day. The 15th was the early release. We don't have evening events on Wednesday, because the teachers have meetings till 4 and can't go home and come back. So, we put early release days on Tuesday, because that's the pattern, which we've agreed to in the district. And the teachers were adamant that the experiment we had this year in having afternoon conferences and evening conferences on the same day was exhausting, and they couldn't do it. So, the problem, then, is you have the Thursday, the 17th, and that's the only Thursday left in the month of November.
Well, you've got December 1st, which is two days after your, your, your early release.
And if the, if the school committee felt strongly about that, I think we could work with that.
I mean, the problem really is, for us, that, I mean, we, we sometimes deal with controversial issues. And people want to come visit us. And we need to come in here often on a tight schedule and find parking and get up here. And you've got the Arlington Community Education in the building on Thursday nights as well, which brings a crowd. So, the one thing the committee did was specifically ask the high school to avoid scheduling events on Thursday nights.
Right. And we had that conversation.
And, you know, I, I'm a little frustrated here, in that we've made this request on several years, and we come up with concerts and college nights and performances and all sorts of stuff happening on Thursday nights, creating a crowded situation in this building and a difficulty for everybody trying to attend.
So, I know, Dr. Allison Ebbey, but I'll just express what I expressed to Dr. Jangor, and this is just my opinion, that there's slightly a difference between conferences that only some parents were coming to, and an event where all parents were expected to attend. And what I felt, feel really strongly that we should make sure that is not on school committee nights are things like the, what are they called? The...
College fair?
Or, no, the...
We moved the open house.
The curriculum nights.
Open house.
The open houses, where every parent is expected to attend, whereas this, a parent could potentially, you know, avoid the conflict. That's just, that's my opinion that I expressed, but people could have different...
But, you know, let me, let me just stay back, is that if you've got a percentage of the high school parents and the entire faculty and us and community education, we're overtaxing our facility.
Oh, for parking, for sure. Yeah, yeah. Dr. Allison Ebbey?
I was just going to say exactly what you said.
Okay. Thanks. I should let you speak first. Yeah, I mean, parking is definitely an issue.
Well, would December 1st work?
We can move to December 1st. I mean, that's the, the thing, you know, if the school committee felt strongly, I think we should move it to December 1st. The preference of teachers and parents was to have it in November, but it's two weeks. I'm fine with that.
Do we want, want to get other people's opinion? Mr. Carden?
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't feel strongly about it. I, I think, you know, if it's that much of a problem, then we can move our meeting. I mean, if, if the teachers feel strongly that it should be in November, then I would defer to the teachers.
Yeah, actually, we actually did talk about potentially every once in a while moving our meetings. Yes, Mr. Kipman?
Yeah, I agree with Mr. Carden. I think maybe we can move our meeting. If this is the only date that works, and the teachers feel this is the time in the calendar, this is the time in the school year to do it. I don't, I don't think we should spend too much time on this. I think there's two options. Either we do December 1st, or we move our meeting. I think we should...
I, I agree with Mr. Schlickman. November and December are extremely tight for us, because of the MAC conference, Thanksgiving holiday, and the budget comes on, and all the meetings that we have with the different people. But again, I defer, if Dr. Jangor feels that it's workable, if he didn't think it was workable, I would be supporting the other, the other way. But he thinks December 1st is workable, I support that.
I mean, so, let me just read from the surveys. And the parents, 55% of folks wanted it in November. And among the teachers, 56% wanted it in November. The number drops to 11% for both, or 11% for the parents and 6% for the teachers, 9% for the teachers. So, there is a strong preference. Now, we all think in big targets, and that's a two-week difference.
Right.
So, you know, I will really defer. I mean, it's, it's really up to you guys.
It sounds like we have two...
I mean, one of the things I would say just about the schedule in general, Mr. Schlickman, is that, you know, when we sit down in March in the high school and map out all of the scheduled events we can, there's sort of an impossible, you know, when you go through, just as I said, there's one Thursday in November, when, if you're going to do it on a Thursday, you can have it. And we have that similar problem that pushes things to a limited number of times. And then, we end up with, you know, every year, multiple other groups, sometimes they consult with us, sometimes they don't, having things on other dates. And so, we end up with concerts at Odysseum and other things. And it's just a frustration for all of us. And there's many nights when I have big events here at the high school, and I show up, and there's 100 people parked here for an event that we were not well aware of. So, it's, I know it's something Dr. Bodie is working on, but having tried to do this in other districts, it's a moving target in a community that is as active, and in a facility that's as active as this.
Mr. Kipman?
My own, my preference would be that we, we have a conversation to see if we can move the meeting that week. I, I don't know, I mean, I haven't thought about it, but just to do a little poll offline.
I'm looking at the calendar, and I'm not in favor of us moving that meeting, because we would then meet December 1st, 8th, and 15th. And that seems like...
Oh, I think the question was moving to Tuesday. We talked about that.
Tuesday or Wednesday.
We're moving to Tuesday. Okay.
Of doing that occasionally, if we needed to.
So, I would say, I would say, so I'm suggesting, Chris, Tuesday or Wednesday of that week.
If we, if we feel that that's what the committee want.
Okay. We don't have to decide.
It, it sounds like that's a sense of the committee, that you should keep, keep it. That's why I'm reading this. And we will decide what to do on our end, in terms of whether we have our meeting there.
You should note that he's already moved the open house. It was a Thursday, but we moved it...
Yes, great.
To, was it Wednesday? Or was it a...
I believe we moved it to Tuesday.
Was it 20th? Tuesday.
Okay.
It was a Tuesday.
Which is Tuesday, the...
The 20th, September.
We're seven people. We could, I think we should just take a look at other dates that week. Tuesday night or Wednesday night, the school committee can meet. Is there a way that you could, for that event, I don't know how bad the parking really is for open house, for conferences, but is there a way that we could simply rope out, for example, the superintendent's end of the parking and make that for school committee meeting? Maybe on the honor system, but if you know people are coming, or if there's some set of people coming.
Well, I'll ask Dr. Bodie to, to explore that option. But thanks, thanks for that suggestion. Okay. Yes, Mr. Hayner?
I think the big trick is not to have any hot-button items like mine.
I don't know that we can control...
No, I'm being, I'm being facetious.
Okay, so...
I mean, we also...
Yeah, yeah, Mr. Kipman.
I think we also have to remember, it's not just about parking. It's about the fact that many of us need to take part in these at some point, you know, I mean, our kids...
We will have two other times.
Yeah, that's, that's... Right, right, right.
Why do we avoid the other things?
So, right.
Okay. There is some chance that we'll bring you back in the fall, and I'll get a sense of whether we feel needed. Dr. Allison Ebbey?
I just, I wanted to speak to what I think he was really presenting here.
The bigger picture, right.
Yeah, the bigger thing, which is this idea of the change of the conferences. And I think it's fabulous. I was reading through, so I had a, I have a high schooler for my first year. I was one of the people who did not know about the 10 o'clock opening. I didn't send you any angry emails. I thought it was my fault.
Well, the system also crashes at 10:30 every time.
Okay. Well, I was a couple days later, so there was nothing open for many of the teachers. Event, I was able to see some of them and then sign up on the later schedule. But there were teachers that I wasn't able to talk to at all. I really like the idea of having these open houses. I would suggest, for the ones where it's a meet and greet, have name tags for everybody, because I'll make it eas, if you're doing brief, brief meets and greets, it's easier if you can actually see the name and, and put it to a face. But I think that'll be really a nice way of getting to know more about the classes without having to take up the individual teacher's time.
So, our plan is, following this meeting that you approved, the, the basic pattern, to send out the description with a letter explaining it to parents to get some feedback, and then to try to tweak the system going forward. So, we'll roll that out a couple times between now and the fall.
And just, is that, is that the letter that we have? There's another letter as well.
There's another letter that's longer.
Okay, so we, we'll get that later on to be able to, yeah, that'd be great. I have to say that I'm one of those parents who thought I had to meet with all my teachers. I didn't know that I wasn't supposed to. So, I feel bad about that.
Well, it's funny, there's many things we tell parents to do, sort of by reflex.
Yeah.
And I don't know if folks read, but there was a recent large study that looked at all of the... And I don't know if folks read, but there was a recent large study that looked at all of the research on parent involvement. And many of the things that we do, um, that we think we're supposed to do, not only do they not have a correlation at the high school level with better outcomes, some of them have negative correlations with outcomes. The things that are most important are supporting education at home, are talking to your students about the work they're doing, about making sure that they have a regular time to sit down at dinner and to study. Um, those are much more important than sort of being in school or reading Power School. Uh, many of those things, which we put a lot of energy into. So, hopefully, we can educate everybody on that as well.
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
I'm sorry, uh, no, okay, great. Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, so, we are at the district goals and we are just on time. Okay, Dr. Bodie, do you want to-
Yes, thank you. Let's pull this back up. At our last meeting, there were a number of suggestions. Um, the, and then the district goals, quite appropriately, were referred to Curriculum and Instruction and Accountability Subcommittee. And we met, um, and actually, actually, maybe Mr. Schlickman should speak to that. And there were some suggestions made. The subcommittee of the Superintendent's Committee on Diversity came and, and talked about, um, you know, their advocacy for cultural competency being very, much more explicit in the district goals. So, there had been a couple of changes and, um, I've had so many renditions of this, I'll have to see where we are in this. But, in the, under the first goal, there was, I think this one you're already aware of, that we had added cultural proficiency skills and diverse, so, cul- we had social, emotional, and cultural proficiency skills needed for college and career readiness and to be contributing members of a, this is where I put the word diverse democratic society. So, the major change in goal two was to focus on the professional developments for administrators next year, with next year being a planning year for, uh, professional development for teachers the following year. The other change that I, I think you're already aware of is moving the addition, the, um, into goal two, the goal about having the diversity, the Arlington Public School staff next year, have the diversity increase in the baseline of this, this year we're, we're in right now. So, I'm going to read the goal because I don't think I said that very well. Increase the diversity of the Arlington Public School staff over the two thousand fifteen, sixteen staffing levels to better reflect the diversity of our students. So, that had been in a different place, but it makes more sense to have it here. So, e- everything is pretty much the same until you get to goal three. And, um, we did include in goal three, four, involving all stakeholders in the process. There was a lot of discussion about that. And then, one of the, the other points of discussion is that, you know, we have come to value the outreach to the community in a whole variety of ways, whether the surveys or forums or coffees, whatever they might be, is to acknowledge that and, and recognize it in adding some other language in four-three, which is continue to engage parents and stakeholders as the district addresses enrollment and facility needs. So, so have, it, it will vary from having a small committee and Thompson's, a lot of variety to this, but it's, it's acknowledging the work we've been doing and the work we will continue to do as part of these processes. So, those are the, of the changes. I don't know, did I pretty much-
Yeah, that pretty much states it. I think that one of the, uh, it, you know, it, it was, the, the changes are minor in the document but are substantive in the conversation that we were able to have. Because folks understood what we were already doing and what we're trying to do. And so, by highlighting a couple of things, particularly around the cultural competency, we're, we're going to do what we were going to do, but it's highlighting it and, and stressing the importance of this work. So, um, the, the process of going through this in subcommittee was a very valuable one and I, I know that the Superintendent's Subcommittee on Diversity of the, or, you know, it's just too long, I can't-
Cultural competency.
Cultural competency Subcommittee of the Diversity Task Force.
Easy for you to say.
Yeah.
Not really.
Uh, but, but it, but it was really wonderful to have them there to talk about this and we all came to consensus, tweaked the language a little. Uh, we'll have a, a website up. Uh, we talked about this last week in, in the Subcommittee Report. Uh, it was a great process and I'm very appreciative of the folks who participated with us.
Dr. Allison Eppi.
So, I was unable to join you when you were discussing this. The question I had when I was reading through all of these are, how will we in the public know whether the goal was achieved? And when will we have that? And I'm thinking especially of, Dr. Seuss has talked about going and trying, and Dr. Bodie trying to set up the year-long agenda and that, you know, these metrics or measure, whatever the things are, whether they're reports or, or something, are what you slot into that agenda. And right now, reading these, I don't really have a good sense. And so, I was hoping to find out at some point when we're going to find out what those are and, um, you know, both what and when we can expect them.
Dr. Bodie, can you speak to?
I can.
Yeah, I, I think, uh, in Subcommittee, we discussed this in that, in, you have to have the goals first before you develop the measurable outcomes and, and the timelines. And so, that, uh, the Superintendent is going to be working with her administrative staff over the summer to develop that full matrix and present it, uh, in Nov- in September. So, that, that's the next logical step.
So, you've already carved out the time for it. So, Dr. Bodie, do you think we would get it at the first meeting in September or will, is that too early?
No, I don't think it's too early at all. In fact, we're starting to work on it this June in the school.
Yes, Mr. Hayner.
So, I think to clarify, what we're, what we want to have in the, in the chart is a column that says, you know, output for school committee review.
Right.
Or, you know, item for school committee review or documentation for school committee review. So, one column in the chart.
Okay.
That make sense?
Do you want it to go to the full committee first or do you want to go to Subcommittee first or?
Oh, I don't know, I think, because he's going to do it over the summer, I just trust-
Just go as well as possible, okay.
Yeah, I think you trust, yeah, they just get it done.
You don't want to meet over the summer?
I mean, if-
Jeff will be happy to meet.
If Paul wants the committee to meet, the CIA committee, I will, I doodle it and I'll go. I'm around.
You only need two.
So, actually, I, I have a comment, which is, um, to say, uh, this is one of my passions, the, the stakeholder engagement and that, um, stakeholders are a variety of people. They're, they're parents, but they're also, very importantly, teachers and administrators and community members. And I think that we've done a really good job this year of engaging all of those people um, with respect to the decisions that we had to make. And I know that we have a lot of changes and a lot of decisions coming up in the coming years and that I'm looking forward to seeing sort of similar types of processes where we really do, you know, ask teachers what they think, ask, you know, obviously administrators, but, and, and, uh, community members that might be affected by it, that might not be parents or may be parents, or, you know, really sort of reach out to all the stakeholders as we go forward. So, are we ready to vote?
Yes.
Yes? Yes, Mr. Hayner.
Move to, uh, accept the district goals for two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen as presented.
Okay. A motion made by Mr. Hayner, suggested by Mr. Schlickman. All those in favor?
Aye.
And I, too. So, you and I must vote. Great, thank you. Okay, so, we just have a couple of minute discussion about the buffer zone expansion readjustment process. And I wanted to bring this to the committee, uh, to get your thoughts about, um, how we should set this up. And my gut feeling is that this is not as dramatic of a process as it was a few years ago when we did a really, you know, redistricting and when the assumptions about whether people would be grandfathered or not grandfathered were up at, were in play. But, we have a couple of possibilities open to us of how we can handle this and I just wanted to, to get your ideas. Yes, Mr. Hayner.
Just a question, would you remind me again why we're doing this? I know, I know it was brought up, uh, during the school enrollment task force, an issue about what it would take to, to do redistricting and stuff. My memory is that part of the component of the redistricting we did, superintendent had the, uh, we designated the superintendent's ability to cross lines and stuff when it was appropriate and things of that nature. So, I, I guess what I'm asking is, why are we doing this?
Right. Okay, so that's, so, uh, Mr. Schlickman.
Yeah, i- i- it's minor unless your house is in the, uh-
Right, right.
Being moved into a buffer zone. Uh, I would, i- i- if this is something that we need, think we need to do, uh, and, I don't know if it is. Uh, I'm, I'm lacking the data.
Dr. Bodie, can you-
I'll let, I'll let the superintendent say that. But, if, if it's necessary to tweak it or make some minor adjustments, and it may very well be, that I would refer to Community Relations Subcommittee, which was the process we did the last time we did it.
Okay. I actually wasn't sure what we did last time. Dr. Bodie, do you want to speak to the need?
Well-
If there is one?
I think it might be better to, to wait on this discussion till the fall. I can tell you what my experience has been so far, um, as we've been going through the enrollment. I'm not sure, at lea- at least at this point in time, this, this particular, um, registration process, whether it would have made much difference to have wider buffer zones. There has been some movement between, uh, different buffer zones, but I think the, where this began was thinking about the Hardy-Thompson.
Yeah.
And the situation there is that they're both growing. We'll talk a little bit on enrollment numbers as well. They're both probably now having kindergartens i- as a total around ninety. There's no movement there, but the, some of the thought was, well, maybe some students could go to Bishop, but that's not going to work either in terms of being able to keep three kindergartens at Bishop. So, I'm not sure that it, and I, and I'll have to sit down after we go through this process to see if it would have made much of a difference. We are very tight everywhere this year. Our, maybe I'm just jumping ahead a little bit in enrollments, but I think our kindergarten class is going to hit five-twenty, if not more. Very tight.
I, I, yeah, I mean, when I've heard people talk about this, I think people say, are trying to get, can we move some kids out of East Arlington to Bishop? And then some Bishop kids to Stratton and to back it and, you know, if we just sort of shift the boundaries a little bit. And so, the question is, would that, would expanding the buffer zone, uh, potentially help with that?
I think that's why I need some time, uh, some reflective time on this. And I'm not sure that's the district where it would make a difference. Now, it, it might have made a little bit more of a difference, well, I think it's clearing up with the Dallin bracket. You know, the, in every single one, there's a, like, a little bit where, well, it'd be nice if we could have three students there instead of here. So, but I have to say that all of the, all of the schools are getting up to the numbers we would like not to go over for our kindergartens.
Yes, Mr. Hayner.
We get a report on the buffer zones in the, in the fall, right? So, I think, I think that's the time for-
To have this discussion.
Yeah, for us to get, Dr. Bodie gives us the report, whatever the date, October one or something like that.
It's in October, I think.
Yeah, so, we get the report in October on the buffer zones. And then, I think, at that point in time, we've got to take, maybe, we, we may have to take some action based on that report.
Okay.
And that would be a referral to the Subcommittee to potentially expand the buffer zones because they have to be expanded by the time that you start doing enrollment in the, when-
We always do enrollment.
Yeah, you're always doing enrollment, but you wouldn't, but it would be go, but the, okay. But if we were to revise the buffer zones, they would go into effect for FY-
We would need to-
Eighteen.
They would have to be for the spring.
Yeah.
Yeah.
For the spring, and spring enrollment starts in February.
But this is different than the, the last time. It was a look at all of the district lines. This is a, a, a reconfiguration of the buffer zones. We didn't have buffer zones last time. We, the, the project we did last time, the effort we put in last time created the buffer zones. So, now, it's a redefinition of the buffer zones, possibly based on your report in October.
Dr. Allison Eppi.
I would suggest for that report that it would be helpful if you could work with Adam Karowski and actually do an assessment if, you know, would widen, do, answer the question that you're asking. Would widening the buffer zone have allowed you to achieve a different result in the cl- the class composition at the different schools? And I don't know how much time he'd need, I mean, I don't know if that's possible. It seems possible. But, I think that would be really informative for us. You know, because if you find out that, no, it wouldn't have made much difference, I'm not sure where, that we would feel any change.
Mr. Carden.
Uh, yes, so, I had originated this request because if you look at the current year numbers, if you had moved ten kids out of East Arlington, you could have had seven kindergartens in East Arlington and, and still had acceptable twenty-two or twenty-three kids per class. So, looking at the, the next year's data, obviously, we're seeing another bump. So, is that going to be a continuation or is it a bump? We, we don't know. But, but the point was, if you do have a hundred and sixty, a hundred and seventy kids in East Arlington, you, kindergarten students in East Arlington, you can manage that with seven classrooms. Once you get over a hundred and seventy, you can't. So, we're already over at a hundred, a hundred and seventy for next year. And that would be, we wouldn't be able to move that many out.
Right.
But, I think, looking forward, you know, we're all looking at Hardy. What are we going to do at Hardy? We need to look at that because the, next year, not this September, but the following September, they're not going to, they're, they may not have room.
Right.
Um, according to the data we've seen before, unless they, they can find reconfiguration internally to create another room. So, if we want modulators there, we need to know that in September. So, all of this is, is moving together. And that's why I'd suggested looking at that because it could possibly be a relief valve. Obviously, for next year, the numbers aren't looking that way, so maybe we, we wait another year, I'm not sure. Uh, but that was the original genesis of the idea. And I also think, you know, it's been three or four years since we've put them in place. The policy does say we're supposed to take a look at it on an annual basis. So, um, you know, I do think in the annual report that we get about the buffer zones, it would be a good time to, to decide, should we do some adjustments or not.
You may comment?
Yes, Dr. Bodie.
I agree, I think we need to take a look at it. One of the things that is, um, as I'm sitting back sort of watching this whole process as I'm, we're doing the buffer zones, is that sometimes, one of the issues is, is the sequentialness of it. So, you make a decision with one student, which then has ramifications going down. And if you could do all of the students at one time, then it would be easier to do that kind of. But, that's not how it works. And so, it's sort of thinking about that piece of it also. But, I do think that we should look at it and if it's possible, that would, would make a substantial difference, we should consider it because having modulators i- is a very expensive process as we go forward, for sure. And that is going to be an issue at Hardy. Unless we go into common spaces like art and music in sev- in seventeen, eighteen school year, there isn't an extra classroom.
Mr. Hayner.
I think something that we talked about way back when, when we weren't sure if this was a bump or a real thing. I think it's real, I think it's going to, Arlington's going to continue to grow no matter what. And the reality is, the neighborhood schools are either going to go vertical, five, six floors, which I, I don't think is going to happen, or districting, it's going to be called the Arlington District eventually. And, and I, I don't mean to make light of it, uh, I, it's a serious thing. But, this is something coming down. We keep making these buffer zones and it may be sufficient for a while, bigger and bigger. Eventually, it'll be one buffer zone called Arlington. And, uh, we just don't have it. It's a, I'm glad it's more on your table than our table. We just have to agree with you one way or the other. I think we should wait until, uh, the fall, but I also agree with Mr. Carden. We need the information upfront to plan for the following year as soon as possible.
So, it's-
I, I would suggest this to be on our first agenda.
Yeah, okay, so, it sounds like we have an idea of how it would be handled if we do it in the fall, which is Community Relations would be the, the committee who would be looking at it with Dr. Bodie. Um, okay. Good, so, that's, I want clarity on that. Okay, um, monthly financial reports, we have a vote that's needed. Sort of a discussion and explanation.
Let me scroll through my novice agenda to get to the right spot here. Sorry about that. Here I am.
Keep, keep going, keep, good, good job. Stay ahead of schedule.
So, we have, uh, I've done the projections through the end of the year based on the second to the last payroll that was at the beginning of June. And as you see-
And as you see from the summary report, I'm currently projecting that we will be in deficit two hundred seventy-seven thousand, six fifty-four, which we can cover from reserves. I went back through all of my paperwork, and I didn't find that after we, we've, I found all the paperwork where we voted, we voted the budget in a lump, the revolving and the town appropriation. We didn't do it line by line, because at the time, the amounts for the contract increases were all in the admin line, and so we knew it wasn't reflected. But I could find no evidence in my documents, and I, there wouldn't have been any other place it would have come from but for me, that we ever went back and voted it after we did the contracts. So while I did the piece of paper you have on the desk in front of you, as if we're making changes subsequent to the contract settlement, in fact, we're just voting these line items for the very first time. So, but I had finished it before I figured that out.
Can we just, oh, sorry. Can we just take a vote to move from reserve to two seventy-seven, six fifty-four, is that?
Well, we never did vote according to policy, the, the budget transfer lines. We elected not to last budget cycle, because, because the contract amounts were all sitting in the admin line.
Right.
All right, well.
So I don't know what you want to do. I mean, it's kind of a moot point at this point.
It's kind of a moot point. I think you just want money in reserve.
So, so here it looks like, oh, we've saved a lot of money in the admin, but that's not because we really saved a lot of money in the admin.
Correct. That was just the contract.
It was just sort of sitting there, and yes, okay. Mr. Sleifman.
We should do the budget transfer. I mean, that's, that's our job. And if we're moving things from line item to line item, it's not only our job, it's our responsibility to do it. So I move the budget transfers.
Great. Can I?
As presented.
As presented by?
Second.
Ms. Johnson? So motion made by Mr. Sleifman, seconded by Mr. Seelman. Can I just ask a quick question first? Do we have to do anything with regard to the amount that was given to us from the Finance Committee, that, the extra amount from?
Chapter seven?
Yeah, chapter seventy money. Yeah, do we have to do?
We customarily get grant money finalized over the summer and do another, we do another thing in the fall when we get all the grants in for final numbers. And I, I just assumed, we could do it, but I assumed we'd do it all together in the fall.
Excellent, thanks, okay. Yes, Mr. Hayner.
Being the oldest on the committee and totally forgetful, is this where we usually are every year? Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we, we had, you know, I really had hoped we would, we would have some, some savings, but the three individuals with very longstanding tenure and very old policies around sick leave buyback that are now phased out of contracts cost us almost a hundred thousand dollars. And that was an ugly surprise to me. But the other, basically, the other piece of the overage is the, the high school elevator. So we did very well. We came very close, except for those really, those two, those two biggies. You know, we were right there.
Mr. Hayner.
When you said buyback, are you talking?
Sick leave.
Sick leave, yeah.
And how many people?
Three.
And that amounted to a hundred thousand dollars?
Ninety-eight something.
I thought we had caps on that.
We do now, but these people had, were of such long tenure, they were ahead of that.
And the other, if I may, circuit breaker, will that have any effect on this going forward when it comes in?
If we get more in the fourth quarter, that will, but remember, circuit breaker is carried forward. That'll be one of the other things we vote in the fall.
That you'll bring, tell us about in September.
Right.
Thank you.
And then just a question. I know that we added a tiny bit of money to our reserve fund, right? These, in terms of the Special Education Reserve Fund?
That's right. We did transfer a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars from this year's operating budget to special ed reserves held by town hall, uh, held by town meeting.
And that's reflected in these numbers, and?
It is, indeed.
Okay, thanks. Anyone else? Mr. Garden.
So you're showing an overage in revolving revenue as compared to budget of, of thirty-six thousand. Was that reflected in this, or, or is that not reflected yet?
I'm sorry? I, I didn't quite understand your question.
Your revolving revenue tracking? She showing thirty-six thousand.
The second to last document.
Oh, I'm sorry, when I didn't, I forgot to add in circuit breaker. So we're, if you look at the detail on revolving revenue, it's the second to last of the pages. We are actually tracking thirty-six thousand dollars ahead of, of budget.
Right, so is that, does that come out, so that would lower our deficit?
No, that, that number is factored in.
Figured in.
Yeah, no, I didn't, I didn't put in, I didn't put in the circuit breaker amount, which I usually do on that cover page. That was an error on my part. Thank you for catching it.
It's not me.
What's chirping?
I don't know. Cricket.
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 No.
Somebody's pet?
Okay, so we need to take a vote. Can I have a motion?
We'll admit it.
We had a motion, right? We had a second, oh, nevermind, we did. Okay, so all this in favor?
Aye.
And I opposed? Nope, okay, I thought. It was unanimous, thanks. Okay, great. Do, is there anything else, questions about the budget that we want? Well, we have Ms. Johnson here with the monthly tracking. Any other questions? Great, thank you very much. Okay, Superintendent's Report.
We're actually very much ahead of time.
Keep it, keep it going.
Yep, I know, I know. Keep on, keep it on.
Keep on, keep it on.
No, no, there's a lot to discuss, actually.
I understand.
There's a lot. All right. So there's a lot of bullets here, but there's also some other things that I have as well. It is the last meeting. There's a lot to.
It's the last meeting, exactly.
All right. So some of these will actually be very quick. Arlington High School building update. We have been in communication with our representative, our liaison from MSBA. We're going to be setting up some meetings. I believe we've already begun doing, doing some of the work that's involved in the reports. And that's about where we are at the moment. Nothing, nothing much to say there, unless there's any questions. Okay. Thompson School Building Design Update. Oh, you put the, well, let's do that. We can do that. We can do the dashboard.
Okay, and that's actually not here, so.
No, dashboard's not on here, but I was going to, it's on my list.
Yes, great. So this is the thing that we think it will be finished by the end of the summer, is there the expectation, what I understand?
Superintendent, Superintendent, would you take the microphone?
Well, this was, this, where we are with the dashboard was presented to the Community Relations Subcommittee. Before, there was just a, just a long, long list of different graphs. But what Julie Dunn and Claudia Bertoli have done is actually gather the different picture graphs, graphs, into different files. And these are the icons for those files, and we can go through and see, see what some of them are. Some of these graphs you've seen in the past, and some of them are, are new, are new graphs, and, and we may even have more. The thing about this, you don't want to think that this is a finished product. Rather than having it be perfect, I think that it would be better to at least get it up on the website sometime this summer. And we can always add to it. In fact, some of the data is going to have to be changed anyway as we go forward. So there is an introduction which explains what the dashboard, what dashboard is. If you go, that's the, that's the introduction. So the next one is enrollment. And there are a number of graphs here that describe enrollment. We don't have to go through each one of them. But we, we, right now, I can't give you the link, because, for technical reasons. But you can just get a sense of what these different graphs will look like under the enrollment, looking at it from different kinds of lenses. Again, some of these you have seen before, but I don't think you've seen the way it's been expressed sometimes in the bar graph. If you go on to the next icon, well. The next one is budget information. And these graphs you're familiar with. These are graphs we've had in the budget, the report to town meeting. And there may be some other ones we might want to consider having in there. As I said, these things can be updated and then just put back up on the, on the website. But it just gives it a, it gives people an idea of, one, what, where our revenue sources are and what our expenses. And by the way, I want to talk about the math fair later on, but seeing these two graphs reminded me of one of the projects. Three ninth grade students did a math fair project on our budget.
So awesome.
And they used these graphs. We're hoping to get this up on a, on a website. But they were quite knowledgeable and thinking about also what the effect of enrollment's going to be on our budget and how perhaps the cost per student might go down if we have this trajectory. It was very, it was excellent, excellent. In fact, it would be very interesting to have them come and present their ideas, but, you know, the math fair was just this morning. But anyway, they used both of these graphs to explain what revenue and what the, what the percentages were for revenue and expenses. All right, so the next one, our student outcomes. And, you know, this is our MCAS data. Now, one of the suggestions that came at the meeting was to disaggregate this graph into three parts, because it's too complicated to understand. And that's something that's going to be, a project that's going to be, be done. So you'll probably see three different graphs showing the trend lines of our performance in math, ELA, in comparison to the state. Then there's the issue of staffing. And, can't take this. This issue of staffing here. And so what this is, is the ratio, Arlington Public Schools to teacher ratio, and then state students, which is the second bar graph, students to teacher ratio. And each one of the bar graphs corresponds to a different year. So the, the darker blue on the left is the fifteen, twelve. Now, one of the things that's very clear in the Arlington is that we had this spike there. In other words, we had a lot more students for each teacher back in the year of two thousand thirteen, fourteen. And one of the things that we're, been seeing over the last three budget, oh, the last two budget years, and is looking at, looking at what is that ratio. And fortunately, students to teacher is starting to come down. We don't have the data up there for sixteen, seventeen yet for, because we're not there yet. But the other thing that is interesting is looking at the state and how the ratio there of students to teacher is lower than, than we are. And so again, I, it's just more evidence of, you know, that we get outstanding performance and achievement for our students, and yet, in terms of the ratio for teachers, it's, it's quite much higher than the state. And, you know, Dr. Jang was here today talking about what the average class load is for a high school teacher. A hundred to a hundred and thirty students is a lot, if you're going to give students the attention that they deserve. Now, to our teachers' credit, who are very dedicated and they do it anyway. It's just, it's just a lot of students. And, and clearly, there's only so much time in a day to give all students individual attention. All right, so that's that icon. Then the last one over here is technology, and this one is pending. And Dr. Chastain may want to say a little bit about what we might have in that particular part of the dashboard.
Sure, we're going to be looking at devices over time, and then the ratio of devices to students, and then also talk about our capacity in the internet. So there'll be three charts that are associated with that.
And I know there was some discussion in Community Relations of changes and additions, and I assume that all will happen over the summer and we'll see some difference. Okay.
So that's what you're, that's what the dashboard's looking like right now. And in those areas, if you think of any type of way, or you, you're doodling over the summer and want to come up with a, a graph, we could certainly look at inserting it. I think these are broad enough categories in terms of where we're going to have the data. But again, maybe that there's another category that we should, we should take a look at. So that's what it is. And so a dashboard for people listening is supposed to be a quick visual in which you can understand key information about a district. That's what it is. And so you're, you're going to see it in terms of graphs, not narrative, not charts, but rather bar graphs, circle graphs, line graphs, that type of thing. All right? I know, I know Mr. Thillman wanted to get a, get a sense of what it looks like.
Thank you. I did, thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
All right. So now, actually, I should go back to that, because next is the Thompson School Building Design Update. We're on a very fast track if we are able to, with the ultimate goal of having an addition on the Thompson Elementary. As enrollment has grown, for those listening for the first time about this, our situation is that we're going to need in the years ahead, four classrooms per grade. Presently, there are nineteen, so we need five more. Now, as we've gone through discussions about this over the last couple of months, you know, there's been discussions about, should we increase core spaces, such as cafeteria and the gym area? And that was something that was seriously considered. Another issue, another idea was, should we have, if we're going to have six rooms, could one of the rooms be much larger so that it could be an alternate space, particularly for a gym area? That wouldn't be a sort of a, a less of an active kind of a gym, more of a, I use yoga, but it could be something similar to that. And so in thinking about this, some thought, as I said, was given to cafeteria and the gym. But realistically, the cost to add on to those spaces is not worth the small benefit that you would get. For the cafeteria, for educational reasons, the principal of, of the, of Thompson wants to have students go out and have recess before they have lunch. And actually, lots of research says that this is what is the ideal sequence for kids if they want to, if you want them to eat lunch. Because if you reverse it, they are eating quickly, sometimes not eating their lunch, going out to recess, and then they're coming back all charged up. So our schools, to the extent that they've been able to, are trying to have recess first. Now, the problem with recess first is it's not, you don't even want to, if you don't want to have two classes outside at the same time, if you can avoid it, because that's a lot of students. If you have eighty students a class, you could have a hundred and sixty students out there. So that isn't even the ideal. So that, the way it's organized is you have recess, that class comes in for lunch, and then there's just this constant cycling of that. And that pattern's not going to change, even if we increase the cafeteria space because of that other reason. And so it didn't make any sense to add on when adding on would not benefit, benefit the school in any way. But, but it made sense to have an addition that would be a little bit larger so that we could accommodate a large room. But one of the other things that occurred as we were through these discussions, as enrollment goes up at Thompson, one of the other things that is going to be, need to increase as well is some special education breakout areas, or little offices, or ELL. Right now, we have both levels of ELL in the same, in the same room. So in this new design that was brought forward to teachers, discussed with parents last week, and then this Tuesday night was brought to the Permanent Town Building Committee, is this design here. And.
They're all the same, right?
No.
No? Yeah, these are different.
Second and third floor are going to have a breakup room in the middle.
Second and third floor are going to have breakout room in the middle.
Yeah, well, we can go for the, the addition is going to be on the wing. The wing of the school is going to come straight out and go the whole width of the school. One of those early documents we had about Thompson, and we were looking at square footage. If you go back to the space needs study and all that, the proposal was six thousand square feet, six classrooms in a hall. But again, it is, has evolved in the thinking about this project and some of the other space needs that we'd had. This project's now more like seventy eight hundred square feet. So the addition is going the entire width. Because the, if you, when you've been in Thompson, you'll know that it, it, it's not a long hallway with classrooms off of the hallway. There are some, there are some indentations so that you can have breakout rooms. So by putting it, the entire length of the width of the building, you create some extra space. Is there a way to roll, roll that a little bit, Karen? So we can see the design. I think just roll down.
There's another slide.
There's another slide. Yeah, there we go.
Here's your three floors.
Okay, so in this, on the first floor, because of code, you have to go, be able to go outside. So you have to have a, you know, a straight shot out for an exit door. But in doing that, you can still do that and have this room here extended. It would give us over twelve hundred square feet for a room. And that is, you know, bigger than a kindergarten. So it would be a nice, really nice sized room that we could have. Now, when you go up to the second floor, what happens, here's a good example, here's an example on the third floor that I can actually reach to. You've got the classroom, you have a breakout room, and you have another classroom. So this room here is actually a fairly substantial room that could be, as I said, a special education room, it could be ELL. But one of the suggestions that teachers had is that there is connecting door here, connecting door there. So you could actually also use it for students to go out into that space. The other suggestion that had been made, and I believe that it's possible to do and it's going to be, it's going to happen, is to have a connecting door this way as well. So that it's true in all of the rooms, we can connect straight through. That way, a teacher here could open the door and there could be some sharing. Now, that's a little bit more complicated because this is the exterior wall of Thompson. And that is masonry. So it's going to be a, a little tricky in terms of how that would be done, but Ms. Coles, who's the architect, explained.
She said, she said the other night that they'd do that on Christmas vacation, or just prior to school, do a cut, board it up, heat it. Next vacation, do another cut and board it up and heat it. And as a teacher, I thought it'd be great, put Plexiglas in that so the kids could look through, but no, she said, no, you can't do that.
Yeah, and as you also know from being at Thompson, there is a really lovely glass wall here at the end by the staircase. And the, the hope is that whole wall can be just taken out, since it's only two years old, and moved over here. So that, that's the goal. And because you've got the staircase here and you have all the toilets on this floor, there's sufficient. In fact, there's, you could even build on another addition, she said. We don't want to do that. We have plenty, we have plenty of infrastructure and the staircase is right there. So there's a committee that's going to be formed of parents and teachers, because there's going to be issues that are going to come up next year. In just terms of movement around the site. Because it's, you know, assuming that we're able to go forward with this project, and that's, that's not yet. I mean, we have, the voters are being asked if they would be willing to fund it, but it all has to be appropriated. So we need to go back to town meeting in the fall on this, and the task force had wanted to take a look at enrollment just to make sure that we're in fact on this trajectory of increase. Because the last year, as you recall, we had a little bit of a dip, but we're making up for it this year. So this is what it's looking like right now. Now, I can talk in a second about the timeline, which is tight, very tight. So a, a, construction on this will take ten months. So you back that up, you have to be ready really in November first to break ground. Which means that, again, keep backing everything up, we need to, we need to have the designs done on the school by August, late, mid-August. So, or late August, so that we can then go out to bid for OPM, Owners Project Manager, and construction. Now, those awards don't have to be made, you can go out to bid. It would be contingent on town meeting, and of course, that's all contingent on what happens next week as well. But if, if all went as planned, we could have the design done by the end of the summer, go out to bid, go to town meeting, award the bids, and be ready for construction. Now, the thing about, you have to remember next year, it's going to be a challenging site. Construction is going to be going on, on that end of the school with construction fencing. If you've been up to Stratton, you know what I mean, that it's really quite intrusive to the space, but that's the way it is. And then on the front lawn, there is modular building. So this committee is going to be helpful, you know, to, to work on a lot of the logistics of just how kids come in in recess and all those issues.
One of the things I think we or you or the administration have to be very cognizant of, when that building was being done, the students were not there. They were spread out of the town. Traffic today with the existing thing is traumatic going up North Union and around that building. It's really dangerous. With construction going on and stuff, and I know the, the construction people and the contractors are going to take this in. But I would ask you and through Mr. Spiegel to look at whether police or whatever is necessary to be there of making those streets potentially for during this period, and I don't know if the solution, one way, going each way.
Well, we know that we're going to need another traffic supervisor down there on the far corner for sure. Just like at Stratton, we're going to need a traffic supervisor up, up there as well. And that's going to be one of the challenges this summer to get that all in place. Mr. Slifman has.
First of all, I want, I want to say that Mr. Hayner raises a very important point. So I'd like to move that we ask the Transportation Advisory Committee to look at one-way street patterns and other options around the Thompson School.
Is that a motion or is this, okay, a motion? So a motion by Mr. Slifman, seconded by Mr. Hayner. Discussion on the motion? Nope? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And secondly, I'd love to have a copy of this so I can look at it. It's very hard to read, especially with the very pretty font in, in the shaded areas.
I'll definitely send it to you, but keep in mind, this is, this draft.
Yeah, I understand.
Yeah, I'd be happy to send it to you.
But it's, it's on the table, it's on our screen, so, yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah. It'd be easier to look at and you can, you know, you can pull it open a little bit more. And then at the, at the meeting on Tuesday night, Ms. Coles and Ms. Green, who's the other architect for HMFH, looked at the gym in terms of how many chairs and people can get in, what's the code on it. And regardless, as long as you have two doors, even if the two doors in terms of inches would allow more people in the gym, the fact that there's two puts five hundred as the cap. We're not at five hundred yet, but we're going to be heading to five hundred. So there's more thought that has to be made about this issue as well. Now, having said that, the truth of the matter is, we don't have, most of our elementary schools can't have every parent there either, and some schools are actually pretty small.
Is, is there any other school that can't have every kid in the space? Is that true about any other school?
We're getting there.
No, because I think the number is actually smaller than five hundred because of the square footage. It was, there was a lot of discussion back and forth that it was.
The square footage that was presented by code is seven square feet, whether it's a chair or a little kindergarten.
Right, and so I think they came down four eighty or something, so.
Four eighty-three was what was presented by the architect the other night. And I mean, the issue comes when you're doing programs, you not only have a child in the program, you've got one or two parents, so.
Or a teacher.
So you, right.
If you have an all-school program, is there, are there other schools that have that situation where they can't have an all-school assembly with teachers?
I don't want to answer that. I, I can't answer that question right now.
A potential solution for Thompson was, and Ms. Donato was thinking about it, is you put some of the, did the all-school things in the round and put some of them up on the stage area, that would be allowed under code.
So kids could sit on the stage.
Whatever, but.
Anyway, this is where we are right now, and the architect, architects are going to come back June twenty-first to meet with the subcommittee that has been formed at Thompson to go over where we are. So that on June twenty-first, that's it, we're done. We're, we're moving forward with the design, and then they have the summer to work on it.
So I just want to say, when I've heard people talk about common spaces, it's not usually cafeteria, it is this whole all-school assembly. And there's this issue about if you bring a program in as a PTO, for example, that you can't, if you can't get every kid in there, you have to bring the program twice, you know, and that, that gets very problematic, it's very difficult to work around.
As an elementary teacher for twenty-eight years, we always had two programs for all those, just for that reason, in, in brand-new schools and old schools.
It's just twice as much.
I understand, no, I understand. It, it would be, you get twice as many programs if you can get them in for one show, like that. The other part is sometimes the programs are also geared primary and upper. So that, I agree with you, financially, it would be great to have just one show.
We're not there yet at Thompson, so they can do the single program. And, and some of our schools have small, to be honest, I, do I think that we observed the seven square feet for every child in all of our gyms for, for our school programs? No. But you know, you're looking at the math of it, I mean, that's how it's calculated. And, and another possibility in this whole situation might be to find a way to put another door in.
That wouldn't solve the forty-three number. It wouldn't change the forty-three, it wouldn't change the forty-three for my interest in, from that discussion.
You still need the seven square feet, the only way you're going to go beyond that.
Yeah, yeah, right.
Anyway.
Okay, so, any questions on Thompson, where we are there?
Is there, so if you want to tell us about the presentation that you made to parents, and there's another presentation.
Well, we did, we did. It was back-to-back. It was, it was teachers in the afternoon, parents in the evening. Nice turnout for parents and teachers as well. And some people volunteered to be on this subcommittee to meet again, but all parents are welcome to the meeting. We'll, we'll make sure people know about the time, and that'll be on the twenty-first, and then we're going forward.
Okay, great.
Stratton, Stratton is moving along. I don't think there's anything to report other than they're even now picking out colors of roof tiles. So that, that's a good sign, that you were really moving along. There's, there's no issues, I understand, from actually being up there last week, talking to the crew outside, that all the modular units are up in this area. They're sitting out in Littleton or someplace like that, and so they're here, they're not coming up.
I was told that another one arrived this afternoon. The kids saw it while they were on the playground.
Oh, cool. Yeah, one, one of the challenges of these modulators has been the, the location of Stratton up on this hill and coming around some of the corners. Coming up the hill and then the corners.
One of them was made to literally back up and re-approach.
Yeah, yeah. I think, I think they've had to think about some new routes, but anyway, that's, that's been a challenge, for sure. Okay, enrollment update. You had the latest numbers, and they really, I, I don't, I'll certainly give you an update on Friday. But right now, confirmed in our, in our kindergarten, we have four hundred ninety-one with nineteen pending. I will say that just two days ago, we moved some of the pending into different, moved about eight or ten of those into schools because they were buffer zones. So right now, we're at five, ten, if we count both.
Is that counting all the kids that we know of at this point?
No, no, I had, we had a meeting on Monday with the elementary principals, and most said that they know. If even people who have children in the school that haven't registered their incoming kindergarten, so let me just put a plea out there. Please register your, your son or daughter so we, so we know. Because we're, we're trying to make some decisions about teaching assistance, and we would rather make them now than wait a month or two, so. Alright, I'm going to turn this over to Dr. Cheston to talk about summer professional development.
So summer professional development falls into two categories. One is work on curriculum and learning about curriculum, and the other one is professional development that helps teachers grow as professionals. So we'll be spending a lot of time this summer on our new initiatives or expansion of current curriculum initiatives. For example, FOS, which is the science program, will be having professional development for grades four and five. Math is going to be getting, as Mr. Coleman told you several weeks ago, a new curriculum, a new version of investigations for grades K and one. We have had Lucy Colkins for quite some time, we're fine-tuning that. But we're also looking at our new reading units and how those are integrated with Lucy Colkins, too, and how writing and reading are, as you heard from this evening, are integrated. Those would be actually K through five. And then, as Mr. Conklin told you, I think the first presentation that we had on curriculum, in social studies, we're going to be doing some alignment at the elementary school level, and also, as you heard discussed tonight, some integrated units with social studies and English Language Arts. There's also a significant amount of content-specific professional development that's happening for secondary-level teachers. Two things that we're having this summer for teachers that I think are of particular note are school leadership teams that are often referred to as ILTs, Instructional Leadership Teams. We'll have an opportunity to grow as teams and have professional development sponsored by Teachers Twenty-One towards the end of August. An additional, we'll be starting our year-long supporting instruction course that will be for our teacher leaders within the building that is supported in part by AEP. And finally, the last thing is, we're going to be running some ed camps this summer for technology or tech and practice as we'd like to refer it. That will also be in August. That is for all teachers, but specifically, or especially for those teachers at Thompson, I'm sorry, at Odison and at the high school, because they will be going BYOD next year. And it just, to let you know, we will also be offering professional development for those staffs right embedded in the school day, because we have a person at Odison that's freed up three periods a day to do that. We also have Susan Bissin, who's freed up across the district to do that instructional technology work. And we'll also be running some after-school professional development. We've actually run a number of professional developments already, but this is, since it's, you know, when it's right in front of people, sometimes they have more impetus to go for professional development. Ms. Hayner.
Are we up to date? Is everybody that's supposed to have the retail done?
We have a small number of teachers who through no fault of their own were unable to get the course. The State Department of Education has notified us that they actually have a small grant to continue the retail training for next year. And I will be sending out, we just agreed, I'll bet reluctantly, to offer one of those classes here for the convenience of our teachers in the fall. And so teachers will, those teachers who have not been able to get into a course up to this point will have the opportunity to take it here.
Just a quick follow-up, and I don't even know if we can, can we make that a condition of employment going forward? Unless they're brand-new teachers. In other words, if we're hiring a teacher that's got four or five years' experience and stuff like that. In other words, so that we don't get hit with the bill. I, I appreciate brand-new teachers, you know, coming straight out of college and stuff, I, I think.
Actually, they're coming to us with the SEI endorsement, yeah.
Okay.
The only, there are a few teachers that we have hired who don't have it at this point, who've come from other states and have, in Massachusetts, a preliminary license, which you can still get without it, but you can't get an initial license as a core teacher now, as a new teacher, without it.
But the burden then comes for us to provide, or how has that worked out? I don't know. But the burden then comes for us to provide, or how has that worked out, I don't know, I'm, I'm not trying to deny anybody anything, but I don't want us to get in trouble either.
The only thing that I can say for sure is that we have an agreement with the AEA that any teacher that was hired as of July first of last year, was it last year?
Last year.
I think it's last year.
They sent you.
Receives the stipend and receives the training.
Okay. I'm just thinking going forward, that, I mean, we've done due diligence in getting our current staff up, based on the, on the state, I mean, I think the state and its licensure in teacher preparation, and they should make that part of the curriculum.
They are.
They do.
They do.
But if they're not from Massachusetts, then they don't have.
Okay.
Actually, can you just say a little bit something about BYOD, because we haven't heard that, maybe, some people have heard about it and some people haven't.
Okay, so, Bring Your Own Device is going to be, it's kind of been flying under the radar, kids could bring it in, bring a device in, and we would put it on the guest network, but we wouldn't allow it on the actual network, starting next year at the high school, students may bring in either an iPad, a Chromebook, or a MacBook, and they can bring it in and they have to sign an acceptable use policy, there was actually a meeting at the high school last night for the high school people about this, this process, they sign a special acceptable use policy, and then they're allowed to get on the regular network, we've had BYOD all year at, for sixth grade at the middle school, it's been very successful, we haven't had any problems.
But only one kind of device, so that was different, right?
Only one kind of device, next year, we'll still have one kind of device at sixth grade because it's one-to-one, and they're provided with a device if they don't bring one, but at seventh and eighth grade, students can again bring either an iPad, they can bring a Chromebook, or they can bring a MacBook, those devices were chosen because of the lack of bringing in outside viruses to the system, and also because of the battery life and the startup time, as much as many of us like our Dell laptops, they take a while to start up, and when a teacher only has fifty-two minutes in a classroom, they can't wait.
Dr. Allison Eby.
I'm not sure that the high school has pushed out what the BYOD devices would be, I mean, I haven't seen it.
I know, I mean, I saw a reference to it, but we haven't gotten the full.
Well, I saw a reference to the BYOD, but nothing about what the devices could be, so I'm just wondering when that's going to be coming out.
The information that was provided to me that I looked at and approved included that discussion that was handed out last night.
Last night.
That was last night, but there will be a.
I don't actually remember anything last night either, do you, was that, was that something?
They, they showed me what they were supposedly handing out, I have to admit I was not there, but they did show me what they were handing out, and that included the three devices, however, there will be subsequent meetings in the summertime at the high school as well as in the middle school.
Right.
Yeah.
I wasn't able to come to attend last night either, and so I guess the question is, when is it going out to parents who, all parents?
Yeah, yeah.
I will, I will check with the high school, they are handling that on their own, the middle school will have a number of meetings over the summer that parents can come to, it's not as new for the middle school because we had a couple of BYOD meetings, although it was just one device last year, last summer, and we found that that was actually, if we went by that, we would have thought no one was going to bring anything, and then when we advertised, if you want to bring a device, you should come this night, we all of a sudden had sixty people, so we found that when it's like a reality, bring your device, you can be there, so we'll send the information home to the middle school, and then the meeting will happen when people can actually bring in their device.
Ms. Hainer.
Students that we have to provide for, they're not allowed to take those home, am I correct?
That's correct.
How does that affect product and stuff like that, I mean, are teachers sensitive to that?
Yes.
On assignments and stuff?
Extremely so, yes.
Okay, thank you.
So actually, is it our anticipation that every student will be using at the high school level a device more, much more integrated into their, their schoolwork, either that they brought themselves, or that has been provided to them in school?
As to the largest extent possible, given our financial constraints, I would say yes.
And actually, I think this came up last year, if parents do contribute a device, if they're able to, if they have the funds and they are able to contribute a device, it really helps our budget, so, so.
It certainly does.
So, certainly not all families can afford this, and we understand that, but if, if you feel that you do have the ability, this just makes it much easier for us to operate as a system.
And that's one, another reason why we chose those three devices, because they're at three different price points.
Is, I mean, is there any thought going forward to let the parents buy them on time or something through, through, way back when, I remember Apple had something at one time for colleges and universities.
Certainly, if you have a student that's at the college level, you can get a discount.
Right.
There is no thought at this point, some districts have done that, there's some muddy waters about how appropriate that is.
Thank you.
Ms. Jerson.
BYOD, how about school committee? We're on APS guest, I believe.
Yes. Provided you have one of those three devices and you sign an acceptable use policy, I see no reason why you can't be on the school network.
I think he does.
I wouldn't let him on.
That's all we've been asking for.
I can get email, you guys, yeah, I don't know.
I can't get email.
Is that why? I don't know.
There's a ton of things I can't do on.
I don't know.
Every time it comes up, I've agreed to everything.
I'll talk to Mr. Good.
Okay, great, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, so, Ms. Spiegel's going to talk about our hiring update.
So, we're very active right now in district hiring, we're really in the midst of it, so far, though, we have finalized the appointment, and when I say finalized, the people, new people who are going into teaching positions, who have not been in teaching positions before in the district, who are hired as teachers under the AEA bargaining unit, who I've met with and gone over all those benefits and policies, we have nine people so far who have gone through that process, I'm meeting with three more people next week, of those, of the nine people I've already met with, five of them have already worked for the district in some capacity, either as long-term subs, or, mostly as long-term subs, or teaching assistants, and a couple of them have done their student teaching here, and so we have, you know, as I've said before, we tend to hire, some of our principals like to hire people who they get to know through either long-term sub, or student teaching, or teaching assistant positions, and that's a great way for people who are getting licensed, or, you know, going back to grad school to get some experience working with kids, and then, you know, if they perform well and there's, are jobs available, they tend to get hired here, so that's, that's good, we have new, we have filled the, the split cluster position it, positions at Odysseum, both the social studies, English cluster, that's the eighth grade, teacher who will be teaching both social studies and English is licensed in both, and we've hired the science math teacher licensed in middle school math-science, both of those teachers who we hired are people who have done long-term subassignments this year at the Odysseum, so they are well-known to the staff and the students already, so we're progressing, we're hiring, we've filled some math positions that were open at the high school, point-four Latin, special ed at the high school, a second-grade position at Hardy, and a science position at the high school, and a history position at the high school, so, we've, yeah, so we're sort of spread out, we have more people coming in in the, some of the elementary positions that are open up, I also want to say that we've had, my count right now currently is thirteen teachers who are shifting from one position to another, either in the same building in a different grade, or from one building to another, or sometimes in the same building with a different, maybe they're in a special ed teacher and going to a different special ed program in the same building, so, we do have some movement, and we are still having some movement in the district, and we do, we're in a kind of a, it's a little volatile right now because a lot of our teaching assistants now, and some teachers also, we've gotten some, some recent resignations, not a lot, I don't think we have a ton of turnover, but it happens every year that there's people who have to move away for family reasons, or, or some people who get a job somewhere else, and I'm having, I'm going through exit interview processes with, trying to do with all the people who are leaving for whatever reason, and, so, as, there's going to be a lot of shifting in the next, you know, all summer, between TAs who are leaving because they're getting jobs somewhere else as teachers, or going back to grad school, or doing something, or moving away, and filling those positions, there'll be a lot of hiring this summer, and then there's, will be some other positions in the teaching and some administrators to fill still.
Yes, Ms. Hainer.
Are there any impact on diversity?
There is, I, I'm not ready to, to, to give you the numbers, but we, there is some positive impact on diversity in the district, and, you know, we've been talking a lot about that, as we have talked about how we're going to roll out the administrator training next year, and, you know, we're looking at diversity in a lot of different ways.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, a few more things, graduation, I actually should have brought this up with Dr. Jangar here, but it was a beautiful day, beautiful ceremony.
Blessings.
Dr. Spies did a great job in her greetings to the graduates, and, you know, thank you, Mr. Thilman, for coming, and some of you were watching, so, it was, it was a lovely day, one of the things that, there's a change in the program this year, they're trying to cut down on speakers and time, it used to be somebody introducing every speaker, and that's the part that's sort of been reduced, but we have another big change this year, we've gone to a single-color cap and gown. I know, it's, it was something long overdue, but it's been done, and everyone seemed to be pretty pleased about it, so, we have extra copies of this, we should get you, I, I don't know.
Yeah, I think we have them.
Good, good.
Yeah, we have, yeah.
Aaron, give us.
You can see all of the different awards, we have a number of students that are getting large scholarships, and in fact, these are just the awards that we are giving, and some of them are small, some of them are books, but there's still recognitions of high, you know, of achievement, and, but this coming week is also Dollars for Scholars, which is the effort by the community to raise money for more scholarships, and I think they have, I don't know the exact number, but it's certainly in the hundreds of thousands of dollars that are going to get distributed, and in fact, this week, we had a book award day for juniors, and we have underclassmen awards after the seniors leave, and some of those are book awards in which students get some very significant scholarships, hundreds of thousands of dollars of scholarships, and so we had a reception up here just the, the other day, and for the, for the juniors that were receiving these, you know, one of them is a hundred-thousand-dollar over four years to, what's the polytech? Yeah, so, there's a lot of great, and Rochester University has, as well, has given us scholarship money, so, our students did very well, they were, I understand, last blast went well, that's always good, but anyway, it was lovely. Moving on, today, we had a reception, our annual reception to recognize teachers who are retiring, teachers in certain milestones, and also teachers who have received professional status, it's, it's actually my favorite event, and Linda helps me out with giving a little, some words about each one of the retirees, but I also want to thank Ms. Suze for coming and Ms. Starks for coming, I didn't quite see you, to see you were hiding way back up, back in the corner, but she came to, to be there as well, it means a lot to teachers to have members of the committee there, so that was terrific, but I do, I, I think that it would be important just to say to the, to the public who some of these people are, because they have been very special people in, oh, I was looking for mine, thank you, very special people, and have given so much, so I want to do two things, I won't go through who attained professional status, but I will talk about the milestone years, we had Mark Miano, now, what's not here, we omitted accidentally, was Rick Ionelli, but he is also recognized for retiring, Mark Miano, I think most of you know, has been the superintendent of school facilities, for that matter, town facilities, how he manages, all he has managed over the years is amazing.
And he doesn't look like he's been here for thirty-five years, I have to say.
You know, for the stresses he's gone through, he, he does not look like it, that's, that's it, because he's just always remained so calm to whatever the crisis might be. And then Rick Ionelli, who just retired, is a director of transportation, in food services, we had Anna De Forte, she's down at Thompson, and Maury Montgomery, who was a teacher at Pierce School, for twenty-five years of service, is Katie Armstrong at Thompson School, Ruth Pickering, who is a speech-language pathologist at Hardy School, and then the other, a benchmark is twenty years, we have Amy Costello, I know some of you at this table know, a teacher at Brackett, Karen Gillis, who is administrative assistant at the Odysseum Middle, Colleen Gorman, a teacher at Brackett, who in the past has been named by the senior class to get spec, special recognition, and Lynda Tomlinson, who is a math teacher at Odysseum, so, that's terrific, and I just want to say who is retiring this, this year, actually, some, some of these may have retired last year, but were later in the, and were not part of this recognition, Martha Bennetts, who is a nurse at Stratton, Frank Burgess, who has been the custodian at the Arlington High School for, I don't know, thirty, forty-one years, I think, it's, it's an amazing contribution, June Byrne, who has been a kindergarten teacher at Down for, she was actually one of the people we acknowledged, well, she's, I think has been here thirty-some years, something like a twenty-five, twenty-five years, Dave Dempsey, who retired as special education coordinator at the high school last year, Al Flanders, who's a math teacher at the high school, Dennis Geller, a math teacher at the high school, though he's coming back for a little point two next year, fill a gap, our director of transportation, Rick Ionelli.
Marilyn Ford.
And Marilyn Ford, who is food services, Paula Martel, who is a traffic supervisor, Nancy Muse, an art teacher at the high school, she retired mid-year, Debbie McIvan Pelech, who is a kindergarten teacher at Hardy, Jill Parkin, special education coordinator at the elementary level, and Alicia Taft, who's been our special education out-of-district coordinator, so, I, I'm hoping that they felt celebrated because their contributions have been huge.
To say, one of the fun jobs I had this morning is running around and giving corsages to, to all the teachers, and just real pleasure job to do as the chair, yeah.
Just want to add, I don't know whether he wants to be recognized, Mr. Flynn has also participated in the polar plunge with me in the past year.
He did, I didn't realize that.
He helped raise money to fight COVID.
Well, he is a, is prob, is a rower, in fact, a very world-class rower, and he's also a coach, so he's sort of moving into that passion of his, a couple of quick things, the, the Odysseum Middle School had to do their concerts in two different nights, the size, outstanding, really, there was, this one this Tuesday, they, they were all very good, but the ones, they're, I don't want to pick out one more than the other, but the quality of singing was excellent, and so, so congratulations to the music department at the middle school, the Boys Ensemble received a gold medal at a competition on Friday, so we'll get more information for you on that, and then, Tino D'Agostino was again invited this year because his jazz band is, is just extraordinary, to the Italian Institute.
Oh, yeah.
To celebrate Italy's reunification, which is an annual event, and they were, I went to it, they were, they made us all very proud in terms of how well they performed, I could hear people saying, they're so good, and they are, they're very good, and then, lastly, I think lastly, lastly, today was the math fair, I mentioned one of these, but there, there was another project, I, I, we have, I don't know if we can put it on the website because it's, has students in it, but we're working on that issue, but, these students, you know, wanted to think, wanted to figure out how many green pieces of turf were out in our turf field.
Interesting.
Yes, it were interesting.
You mean like str, blades of grass?
Yes, single blades of turf grass, exactly so.
Blades of turf, okay.
You want to take a wild guess as to how many there are?
Blades of turf grass.
Roughly so, I mean, you don't have to, rounded number.
One and a half.
One and a half million. One and a half million.
I'm saying, half a billion.
Twenty-five million.
Forty-five million.
What do we get if we guess it right?
You're not even close.
Really?
No, that's, it's in the four-hundred-seventy-million number.
I said half a billion.
Half a billion.
She said half a billion, good idea.
Yeah, you're right, you're close.
You get to go out and pick any blade of grass you wanna take home.
Take a bottle of water home, you want it. Take a cracker or two.
But it was only the green. Only the green.
Not, not the red, or the, yeah.
Here's the part with the, with the, the thinking math in this, is how, you know, if you're seeing some of the fives out there, how do you measure that area to subtract it from the whole?
Right.
They must have taken a square inch, or.
Yeah, but then they had to subtract it, yeah.
Multiply it down.
Much more clever than that, actually.
Google Maps?
Huh?
Google Maps?
Google Maps.
They actually did use Google Maps to, one part of it, to get some of the, no, they, they had, they said they had an aha moment in, in chemistry, because they thought, "Well, wait a minute, how are we gonna do this?" But they realized that they could get, you know, if you're trying to get the area of something, they could get it going the root of density. So, they put tin foil on the, on each one of those big letter, big numbers, crumpled it up.
Oh.
Right, very, crumpled it up, so they could weigh it to get the density, 'cause they knew the density of tin foil, and, and so they used, they went in the root of density in order to, to mathematically find the, two of the dimensions in volume, and they could measure the height. And so that's how they found it. They had a lot of interesting methodologies into, in terms of how to subtract things out. So, you know, kudos to them, they could think it. But this is, the, one of the things, there was a big change this year, is they've gone to electronic. I, I went into the math fair going, "Where are the ma, where are the boards?" There were some, there were, but only about a quarter of them, 'cause they're, they're moving toward trying to create a website of these. But one of the issues is parent permissions. I'd show you the video, but I don't have the parent permissions on the students. But anyway, it was, it was terrific, and, and I, we should probably make sure you hear about it next year, because it's really interesting to come and see the work they're doing. Nine through twelve, well, no, nine through eleven.
So, they were all involved in it?
If you're in, if you're in an honors class, it's required to do it.
I have a project for them.
It's a project?
I have a project. You record a Jell-O.
What?
Find out what you could put a Jell-O with.
Well, there's thought, that, that one probably wouldn't stump some of these kids, they're pretty good, they're pretty good. So there are a lot of projects, and we'll try to get them up so people can see that. Now, the last thing is, and this was a request about lead. I just received this this afternoon, a memo from Christine Bonjourno, who is our director of health and human services, about the lead testing that's gone on here at Arlington, at, at all of our schools. So, the water, and you have a copy of this report, and I've asked her whether I can send.
Where?
No, we didn't.
No, we didn't.
No, we didn't.
Didn't make it. It's certainly not a novice.
Not a novice.
Not definite, huh?
Yeah, definitely not.
I know you had it in your, I know you had it in your hand, your hat in your hand.
All right.
Anyway.
All right, well, we'll send it out to you. But, the, the EPA sets fifteen UGs per liter as the standard, in terms of, of lead. And so, we have a summary of the most recent lead testing results. And all, and this is one source at every school, and all of them were below that, except for, there was a faucet in a custodial closet at the high school that was at fifteen-point-four. And Ms. Bonjourno says that, "We believe the sample was not collected in accordance with MWRA collection standards, resulting in slightly elevated results." So, the most recent shows no evidence. In part, she said, "We have newer piping, too."
Here?
When was the testing done?
When was this testing done? This is, hmm, this is the most recent, and I think it's within, they do it every year. She said that.
They do this testing, the lead testing every year?
Each year, the Arlington Water Department collects two samples at two schools and two daycare centers. In addition to the routine testing that occurs, and that's, so it's an annual. But we also have applied to the Massachusetts Departmental of Environmental Protection for that grant that was offered. I've heard anywhere from several weeks to several months before we know if we get the grant. But, just yesterday, our director of facilities found out from the MWRA that they're sending us bottles that we can fill from all of the different sites, and it's very possible we'll get the results back before the end of the school year.
So, if we get this grant, do we do additional rounded testing?
Yes.
Okay, so there's other testing we might be doing?
There's more to it than just the testing, there's, if they get the grant, she explained here, um, what does she say, there's other things that we will be able to do with this money as well.
No, they don't test it every year.
No.
What?
They don't test it every year, some of these schools hadn't been tested since two thousand eight.
Yeah, 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 right.
They sample them. But these were the lead results then. So, we're gonna do, we're doing the MWRA testing now.
Oh, so this is not, these are not recent results?
So we'll test everything.
These are results from like, two thousand eight, or nine?
Yeah, there's some samples, but, so it's not clear when they do, they do the routine testing, their sampling, if they're hitting every school every year. But, I can find more information, if you have questions for the, for Ms. Bonjourno. If you could send the questions to Karen, we can get those answered.
Just wanna clarify, the testing you're talking about, the MWRA, we're gonna test all the schools.
Yes.
All the fountains and everything, so.
That's my understanding.
Good, thank you.
But I'm getting it secondhand, so I'll have to clarify that.
Okay.
Dr. Allison Ampe.
But I'm pretty sure we're getting that.
I had asked for this to be brought up, not because I had grave suspicions about any of our schools, but because of the amount that it's been in the news, and the fact that other people have had, I, I think it's time, and, and I wanted us to talk about it here, so that our audience can hear it, because I think it's coming to some of their minds. So, I'm glad, it sounds like we're going to be able to test all the drinking fountains in all the schools.
I don't know if we're gonna test every single drinking fountain, but I think we're gonna test, I, I, I shouldn't even say what we're gonna test. All I know is we're getting bottles from MWRA.
Okay.
And we're going to fill them and send them back for testing. The other thing that Ms. Bonjourno pointed out to me the other day, there's an article out there about lead in Arlington water. Did you see that?
Yeah.
That is not Arlington Public School, that is a nursery school program, I think, up on Arlington Heights. But it is not, was not, and of course, you just read the, the headlines, you would assume this is Arlington Public School, and it was not.
So, actually, clarification, so if we do not get the grant, would we still do the testing that we're talking about? Or is it dependent on the grant?
These are two separate things, as a grant.
Right, to do the full lead testing.
Yeah, I don't know what the extent of the full lead testing will be, but one of the things we all wanna know is, is the water that's being consumed in our school buildings have lead in it?
Right.
Are we gonna test every single water fountain? Probably not, but I think that you'll get enough samples that you should be able to say whether the piping, 'cause the piping is coming in, you know, in the building, and dispersing in various areas. How many sites will, as best practice to test, I couldn't tell you. So there's that grant that's sitting out there. We were prepared to do the testing anyway.
Okay.
If we didn't get it. But we applied for it, because it was, it's actually a fairly limited amount of money for the state, for all the, all the schools in the state. But, but then, this new piece of information just came to our attention yesterday, that, in fact, this afternoon. Had to clarify, that the MWRA is going to do some testing. They're probably doing that for all of the customers in the Boston area. So, those bottles are arriving, those bottles will be sent back, and I'm, we may have results before the end of the school year.
Great.
So I'll let you know.
Yes, Mr. Starks.
So they're gonna test every school with those? Okay, because these are not the results of testing, this is just, these are results of testing over the years. But what concerns me is that there's no testing that was done in two thousand fourteen or two thousand fifteen.
Right.
If it says that we test two samples at two schools every year, where are the fourteen and fifteen results?
That is a question we can, we can ask. I don't know the answer to that, I just literally got this late this afternoon. All right?
And, and when they tested Thompson, I hope Thompson passed real well, because it was just open that day.
Well, they, last time they tested it was two thousand thirteen.
They just opened it up, two thousand thirteen.
No, it's got some of the highest.
Some of it is coming in from outside, it may not be.
Plus the piping in the street, too.
The piping in the street, yeah.
Well, that also could be the joints. You don't want lead, period, near the kids.
No.
I don't mind.
Okay.
So anything, anything else? No.
Great.
That's it, and we're no longer ahead of schedule, sorry.
Well, at least we're at.
Now we're on schedule.
We're at schedule. So, the school committee reps on the building committee, I think I understand, you know, we hope to get a positive vote this Tuesday for the high school building project, but we thought we should go ahead and appoint the two reps in school, reps in the school committee. And I have received sort of two people who are interested in doing it, Dr. Allison Ampe and Mr. Thielman. And I thought, since this is such a big project, that it'd be great to have more than one rep, to have two people, because two people can share the burden of the meetings and the notes, and, and, and it just may not be the case. It, it just may be too big of a job for one person to do. So, I'd like to entertain, do you have a comment?
Are you talking two for each project, or one for, to two people that are volunteering?
Two for the, yeah, I mean, the question, two people for the high school building project, yeah.
It's too big for me, Bill, but not too big for Kirsty.
No.
So, I guess entertain a motion to.
So moved.
Perfect, okay. So, motion by Mr. Slethman, seconded by Mr. Hayner. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, and, and I guess. Good, thanks, congratulations.
Do you know any more about the rest of the makeup of the committee?
Sure, Dr. Boddy, do we have any more information as of yet?
No, there is going to be an offer made out to the community, but that won't happen until after, after the election.
I think we have sixty days, is that right?
Yes.
From this committee, so, yeah.
There are people who have already sent emails, and so they're, we're going to work on, and have started to work on criteria. Because it's not gonna be a big committee, we're, we're looking at probably just a couple of community members. And I think that there will be an emphasis on experience and professional work that might lend, lend some value, not value, but some expertise to this committee, which I think would be important to have. So, that is, that the, the, both the way to outreach, and what we're expecting people to return to us, has not been finalized.
Dr. Allison Ampe.
Who's making, I, I understand it hasn't been finalized, but.
Who's gonna make the decision?
Right.
The town manager and, and myself. And actually, no one who has sent me an email is anyone that I know, so it's just gonna be strictly on, and, and it's gonna be hard, because we have quite a few people, and I know a lot of people would want to. But the one thing about it is, it's such a long project, that the chances of people being able to stay the whole duration of it is gonna be challenging. But we're hoping that, I think there's a value having a little bit larger, so that there's a, there's a institutional knowledge there, too.
Can I make one suggestion?
Sure.
If we have to have any meetings of the committee with the MSBA in Arlington, can we hold them at the Thompson School while the construction's going on?
Yeah. That's a very good idea.
I like that. The only place available.
That's nice, yeah.
Well.
At the end of the building.
Our newest school.
I, I think that, I think that the meetings are going to be in, in an MSBA. That's, that's usually how they have been.
They're gonna wanna come on at least once or twice.
You could, you could hold them in the pit downstairs, the wrestling pit.
They've been very, they're very good about coming out and bringing, sending a team in the fall, so they have a pretty good idea.
They know what the high school looks like.
Yeah, they, they, they brought out a really strong team of people, and they toured, and they asked questions, so they have a very good idea what's, what we're dealing with here.
Okay, okay. Okay, consent agenda. Couple of things in here. All items listed with an asterisk are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless a member of the committee's said requests, in which event, the item will be considered in its normal sequence. Approval warrant, warrant one-six-one-seven-five dated May twenty-six, two thousand sixteen, in the amount of six-hundred-and-fifty-five-thousand-six-hundred-and-sixty-eight dollars and four cents, as amended. Approval of minutes, minutes from the regular school committee meeting, May twenty-six, two thousand sixteen. Approval of calendar, second reading of the two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen APS school calendar. Approval of job description, health office secretary. Approval of trip, approval of Montreal trip in April of two thousand seventeen. Mr. Hayner? Pull out the trip, any of us?
Didn't we already adopt the calendar?
No, this is a second read, so this would be the, the final.
Didn't we just vote to change?
Could I just say?
We talked about.
Has amended today?
Oh, okay, so, can we do that easily? To the, oh, no, no, this is, this is, actually, we haven't, this, this second reading includes the small change that was suggested by Dr. Jangar. So if we approve this, I think it goes through, so.
So moved.
Yeah, okay, so, moved by Mr. Thielman, seconded by Ms. Starks. Okay, so we're pulling that, any discussion, we have no discussion, we're done, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? And opposed, okay, unanimous, trip, yes, on the trip, Mr. Hayner?
This trip, I, it, since we're approving it, it's a school function. Am I correct?
Dr. Boddy.
My concern is that when you look through the document, on the first, first, I think it's the second page, is there a process in place for students who cannot pay for the trip? It, it's very.
It's a school thing.
Pardon me?
This is, this is not a school thing, right, there's.
Then we shouldn't be approving it. Can't be both.
We discussed this before, right? I mean, that we, this is not an official school-sponsored trip, or is that right?
I have to put the material.
It's got signatures at the bottom of this, from the principal to the foreign liaison coordinator.
Is it a French club trip, is it?
Yes.
Yeah.
From the middle school, we got.
It's a middle school French club.
Superintendent. Well, it says superintendent signature, principal signature, signature department head, and signature of the international coordinator, and all those people signed on it. All I'm saying is, if this is a school-sponsored trip, I have issues with this. If it's not a school-sponsored trip, we shouldn't even be, it shouldn't even be brought before us.
So actually, can I call, Dr. Allison Ampe, do you remember, we've discussed this in great detail. Do you remember sort of what the distinction was, and whether?
No.
No, okay. I don't either, unfortunately.
It's our teachers taking students from our school.
Yeah. So that's what we have to.
It's a school trip.
We, we have trips like that, we have trips to Quebec, we have trips to Italy, we.
I, I, I wanna, no, I'm not opposed to the strip, I'm just concerned with students who cannot afford this. The way this was put it, they suggest, offers a donation page for students who wish to solicit donations for their own trip, and then, the I will research, I don't, I assume, I, I don't know who the I is, is that the head of the department? Other means of fundraising, such as donors, choose. And I, my understanding, when, when the school sponsors something, those students that we can identify, and we have a process for doing this, are in need, the school picks up the bill. We don't have kids, students going out and soliciting. If it is a private trip, that's appropriate, kids do car washes and things of that nature, they've done that to, to go on different sports trips and things of this nature. We don't have kids, the students going out and soliciting. If it is a private trip, that's appropriate, kids do car washes and things of that nature, they've done that to, to go on different, uh, sports trips and things of this nature.
And I mean.
Uh, Mr. Harden, yeah.
That, this has come up at science camp, and there's, there's no such policy.
Yeah.
What?
That the school covers the trips.
We don't, we don't cover.
The school, the school cannot offer a program that costs any money, uh, that requires a student to pay for.
We, we do it all, this is, yeah, we do it all the time, and this is certainly, um, something that we've been doing.
I'm not suggesting what we're doing is, is following it.
It's, it's, it's an offer, it doesn't mean that we would necessarily allow it, it's, but it is, it is something that the company is offering as a possibility for students, so they wanna do that.
So, just a clarification, you don't have to, you don't have to take this trip as a student, right? I mean, you're not gonna be penalized in any way, in terms of your.
All I'm saying is, this is something being offered through the school district.
Yes.
If you put something on us, on a student, an added burden on a student, it is inappropriate, because we are a public school fun, thing. If this is a pri, if we were in a private school or the private sector, no issue. If this is a private program that people wanna have kids go on on their own, no problem.
You know, I think.
We shouldn't be approving it.
Let's actually bring this back to policies, does that make sense, and for maybe further discussion, I know this has been.
They're going on.
Yeah, Mr. Thielman.
When, when does the trip need to be approved? I mean, they need to start planning this, right, and so, this is our last meeting, so.
Yeah, I didn't mean the trip, actually, I think, I think this is a larger question that maybe we should talk about.
I think, I think our, I think, I don't know if it's a rule, I don't know what it is, but, um, when this has come up in the past, if it's mand, mandatory and curriculum-related, and a student can't afford to go on something that's part of a curriculum, then we have to, we have to take care of that, but this is not, this is an option. It's an offering to students.
Then, my question goes.
So, it's an offering, it's an option for students.
Then why are we involved?
Well, because there's, there, our teachers and our students are gonna go on the trip, and our insurance is covering anything it might have.
If, if, once we become an agent, I think our liability extends across the board.
Okay.
We, our liability does, our insurance.
Well, the liability also goes into the policy aspect of it.
Okay, Mr. Schlickman.
Okay, um, we've got students going to Japan.
Yeah, we have everything.
They are not go, we didn't, they didn't come through us, uh, this is being handled through the Community Education Act. So, that, uh, if that's the way we're doing business with this, uh, and this is a community education offering rather than a school department offering, community education can offer a trip anytime they want and charge whatever they want for it, and run it through that program, so thus it wouldn't come before us, and we wouldn't need to approve it. What we need to approve in terms of, and we don't do out-of-state trips, what we're doing now is, uh, more than X number of miles, so we're not approving trips to Nashua. You know, it's field trips organized during the day, all the kids get on the bus, they go someplace. If this is indeed a private o, o, offering as it appears, I think the appropriate venue for that should be through the community education program and not through us, so we wouldn't vote it.
Okay, Dr. Allison Ampe.
I think we should separate this trip from what we wanna do in the future.
Yeah, I agree, yeah.
I would, okay, I think we should move approval of this trip, um, because I don't want to not approve it and then have something fall apart. And then, I think policy should, I mean, when I say fall apart, I mean that, that the trip would have problems going forward, not that there's problems with the trip. And then, I think policy needs to clarify what we need to be doing, and I think Mr. Schlickman's idea of having things go through committee, Ed, might be a reasonable approach, but I think we shouldn't be trying to conflict it, too.
If we're going to do that, we have to suspend filed, uh, policy JJA, which states all students which include late, which include late night or overnight travel must have prior approval of the school committee, which we're seeking right now. Initial approval of the school committee is required before engaging students in fundraising activities, school committee will also consider educational value, goes on. So.
This is, this is consistent, then, with the, with that.
With the policy.
With the policy. Okay, um, so, it sounds like a motion has been made by Dr. Allison Ampe to, no?
I will make, I will make it, I didn't.
Okay, well, let's make a. What's the motion?
I move approval of the trip.
Move approval, um, and with sort of the understanding that we're gonna send this to policies in the fu, to look at the bigger picture in the future, that later, but this is the trip. Seconded by Mr. Thielman. Um, okay, so, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'm, I, opposed?
Aye.
No.
Okay, so, two opposed.
So, then I think a second motion should be to move to direct the policies procedures subcommittee to, um, evaluate all.
Review this issue.
Okay, so, um, motion by Mr. Thielman to direct the policy and procedures subcommittee, seconded by Dr. Allison Ampe, to look at the, um, do you get that? To, to look at, to look at the policy for.
Field trips.
For future trips.
Well, all trips.
For future trips, yeah. Okay.
Call a vote.
Call a vote, oh, we just did, didn't we? Oh, oh, this phone, I'm sorry, I'm so sorry.
It's alright.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, I think that's unanimous, thanks. Okay, um, so then, subcommittee and liaison reports.
Vote on the rest of the, did you vote on the?
Yes, we did.
We did, we did, yes, yeah.
We're not sending you anywhere.
Yeah, I think, I think we're, yeah. Subcommittee and liaison reports, um, budget.
Okay, um, this afternoon, okay, so budget hasn't met since we last met, um, and has nothing to report in that respect. However, I realize that at this time last year, we were having some discussions over what kind of information we wanted to see in next year's budget book, and how we wanted that to take shape, and, um, I'm not sure of the timing, we can, I can meet with budget sometime before the end of school, and we can start having these discussions. I haven't even had a chance to find out what the timing is of, of when the school department would need to know if, if we want to do. I felt that the information that we presented this year at town meeting was very well-received, especially the information about the things that we were not able to fund. I understand that it was a lot of work for the school department to put together. Um, I don't know if there's middle ground in there, but I think we need to have a conversation, um, and my concern is that if this is our last meeting, this is, was kind of the last chance to do it.
Right.
Before the, whenever we next meet. But whether we want to try and do that again, or whether we wanna drop back to what we've been doing in the past.
Ms. Johnson, do you have anything to say about timing of these conversations?
Um, I think if we, you know, it was the first time through doing something like that last year, I think we could figure out a way to make it a little less arduous. It does change the timing of the submissions, and one of the things that I've always been very concerned about is that the town side does their budgets very early. They submit them basically in the fall with no information about the current year, so they're always two years behind. And this process that we went through, in order to do it without going insane between November and December like we did last year, we would also have to start it in September, October, which means we would have no information about the current year. So, that's the downside. You know, I, I've always wanted us to be submitting a budget after Christmas, because then at least we have the fall. You know, and, and I know the town would very much like to push us back onto the same schedule, but I don't think that's advantageous for the schools. So, um, if this level of detail is needed, it's gonna make a really tough November, December. You know, but if that's what we need to do, I can clear the decks in the fall and figure that out.
But I think his question is, do, um, is it valuable to have a meeting now, is that what you're asking?
Well, part, part of what I'm asking is more to the committee, that what's the sense of the committee? Do we want to go this route again, or do we wanna kind of go back to the looser offerings that we did in the past? And let me just say, the reason that I think, that I'm kind of pushing for this and, and suggesting it, is that I think, over the next few years, we need to be building the case for what our budget needs to be, and this is, to me, is one of the foundations of doing that, and we need to be doing this year after year after year. I don't anticipate we're gonna be able to do another Hail Mary Pass and try and get more money from the town this year, I think the finances are getting tighter and tighter, and I understand that. But at the same time, at some point in the future, there is going to be a re-equilibration potentially of what's needed, and I want us to have the best possible documentation and data from many years, showing what we need, you know, what we were hoping for, what we need, and, and. But I kind of wanna know, are you guys all in with me, or not?
Mr. Hayner?
I support, I think the benefits that came out of the town meeting reflect, uh, the work, and, uh, I'll support Diane in any way to help, to make it less arduous than it was, and I, I, I think she, she put it, we did it once, should be a little bit better each year going forward. So, I support it.
Great. I can just say, I, I know that certain people are very upset about it, and other people were appreciative, so, um, that maybe, that's what we have to encounter, you know, that's, that's our deal, yeah. Yeah, anyone else? So.
Just, just to address that.
Yeah.
I mean, there's a sense in town that greater transparency is the way to go, and I feel that this is creating greater transparency. What I would suggest, then, is that we will just, if, if this is the sense of the committee, then we'll have budget meet sometime with, um, Ms. Johnson and, and the administration, and just talk about, you know, what are the possible shapes and timings and, and nail something down, and then we'll bring it back to the committee whenever we meet next.
Okay.
Yeah, and I was just gonna say that, that, you just stole my words, so we, we can work on a way to try to lighten the load, I mean, you did all those multi-year analyses to support the funding request that we had for the long-range planning committee, that doesn't sound like we're gonna need, so maybe that will lighten things up, and we can work with you to see a way to streamline it a little bit more.
Great.
The real work is, is really, really working with all the administrators who are making the submissions and going back and forth and back and forth, well, how do you need it? How do you, how many do you need, when do you need it, and, and the depth that we went into in those descriptions.
The narrative, not the numbers, is that right?
Laura, Julie Dunn, myself, we were sweat and blood. I mean, it was huge. And that part, there's nothing you can do to help with, nothing. So, you know, it's, it's, just understand that you're asking for a monumental amount of work, and, you know, if you feel it's very valuable, fine, but recognize that it is monumental.
Yes, Dr. Starks.
To me, it's likely to be worth millions of dollars in the future.
From your mouth to God's ear.
Well, I mean, the one, the one thing to keep in mind is that there's, there's a couple of major votes coming up, and the town meeting is the first time that you kind of present evidence of what's coming. And so, we have, hopefully, if, uh, we're successful on the fourteenth, we have a hi, high school vote that's gonna be substantial. And then after that, we have a, a possible override that could be large, and so, you know, I think, with the, I think it's, this should be resolved in a subcommittee meeting, with everybody in the room that's gonna be doing the work, um, but we gotta keep in mind that there's a lot of big things coming up. And it should be resolved, but I think the subcommittee meeting with you guys, figuring it out.
Okay. Okay, good.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just, are you saying we shouldn't provide so much information, or?
No, he's saying, he's saying we are not gonna resolve.
No, I'm not sure.
No, yeah, I'm saying that whatever we provide should be done with that in mind, that, that we have, so whatever we, we provide should be done with the idea of voter education in mind. Town meeting member education, and then voter education, gotta keep that in, in, in the forefront. So, but that's really a subcommittee discussion, but that's how I view it. That's how, that's the context for me, we have to educate people.
Okay. Uh, community relations.
All right, um, community relations, um, everybody has a copy of our draft minutes from our meeting on May thirty-first in Novis. We looked at the dashboard, which you saw today, um, and we talked about, you know, things, uh, that we still wanted to make changes to there. Um, we also talked about the parent and teacher survey, about calendar issues, um, and I think that, uh, from that, so there were a lot of questions in there about start of the school year, dealing with too many snow days, um, but, uh, looking at the data in our discussions in that meeting, the only recommendation we came up with is that we thought we really wanted to investigate the later start time at the middle and high school. By reopening, and part of the reason for that is, you'll understand in a minute, is the timing, um, because we have to reopen negotiations with the teachers' union in order to do that. And so, we, and we felt that if we were gonna change the starting time, that we wanted to make a decision at least a year before it went into effect. So, our thought was to have kind of, if in the sixteen-seventeen year, we negotiate and we investigate and we talk about it, we have a plan and we can get it out in the seventeen-eighteen school year, and then we would implement it in the eighteen-nineteen school year, which basically follows along with, I think, what the superintendents group is doing as far as, um, their recommendations. And so, we just wanted to make sure that the committee was in agreement with those ideas, and if so, I don't know if we need a motion or not, but, um, then we would kind of start in the fall.
And so, the motion is to reopen the negotiations, is that?
I think that we probably need a motion for that, yeah. So, we would need a motion to reopen negotiations in the next school year, in our neck, when we come back, um, to start discussion about school year to start times.
I think, I think you made that motion seconded. By Mr. Hayner?
Do you want it now?
Yeah.
Sure, I'll second it.
Okay. Um, discussion about that motion, yes, Dr. Allison Ampe.
Can I ask, so, if I'm figuring this out right, it would be kind of at the same time as we would be reopening the Gibbs?
Right.
Yes, exactly. So, not only that, it comes at a very good time then, right?
That's what I'm, I think that's a.
And I think there was a question about what sixth grade would look like, would it have the, what, when would it start, there's, there was an open question about that.
Right, but it, it also may make some differences for bus availability.
Exactly.
Wait, wait. Uh, come in, Ms. Hanson, do you wanna?
I guess I would just add, I, I really think it's a good idea to open the conversation on it, because we talked, the more we talked about it, the more complex it, it seemed, and it just seems that, like, there's a lot to investigate and think about and explore, so that'll give us the time to do that.
And I went to a, uh, evening presentation at Newton North that talked about later start times as being, um, I mean, the claim was made that this was one of the most valuable things this school district could do, in terms of, for social, emotional reasons and for academic achievement. And so, I, I'm going to summarize and provide links to the, uh, research that was presented to me that night to, to help with this. Yeah, Dr. Allison Ampe.
But again, aren't, when they talk later start times, we're already late, or late-ish compared to.
We're not, we're not in as bad shape as some of these places, absolutely.
We can't necessarily expect to see this.
We're not making a massive change.
Well, there was claims that even to eight-thirty would make a big difference, but yeah, you're right, it's not the same thing as moving from seven, absolutely, right.
And we wanna do this in conjunction with, you know, the, the superintendents group is also doing this and looking at it as a group of schools, um, you know, and the sports people are, you know, weighing in, so it's all good, I feel like, and this is their same timeframe as well, I believe that they're looking at the eighteen-nineteen calendar year, I mean, school year for.
Mr. Schlickman.
I, I think I answered my own question.
Awesome.
I was puzzled by something, but I figured it out.
Oh, okay.
So, I also, we have the survey results from, um, AEA and, uh, from the community, and I actually reformatted mine to look like yours, just to make it easier to read. Do you wanna just say a couple of things about what you found?
Can we vote?
Oh, I'm sorry, we, we didn't vote on that. I'm, I'm terrible at this.
Sorry.
I deeply apologize. Okay, all those in favor of the motion to reopen negotiations with AEA next year, please signify.
Aye.
Say, yes, aye. Opposed? Okay, that's unanimous. Thanks. Okay, uh, Ms. Hanson, do I say a couple of minutes of, of things?
Even less than a minute, without having it in front of me, um, I don't, so I think in general, there was definitely, um, a real appetite to consider starting, um, before Labor Day, um, with the idea of the two teacher days, two student days, and then the long weekend, um, over Labor Day weekend. But when you and I had actually sat down and kind of looked ahead at when the Labor Day wa, when Labor Day is over the next couple of years, we realized it's really, we're in a good cycle again for a couple of years, and so, um, oh, here it is, thank you. So, and, and just thinking about all the other changes that are going on, that it makes sense to kind of, kind of sit on this good, you know, good information that we collected from both the teachers and the community, and think about that, and think about, um, the seventeen-eighteen year, the beginning of the negotiation for the next contract, that that might be a good time to consider that. Um, overall, though, there was really not a lot of interest in merging February and April vacation. The elementary release day, people are really satisfied with the Tuesday, um, that works for people, and, you know, overall, a slight majority, um, interested in moving to the eight-thirty time start, um, if the, if all the middle sex schools do the same. So, um, I think we have some good information to work with.
And I could just say about the parent survey, um, and I think this is true about AEA, too, there was. too, there wasn't a deep dissatisfaction with the current schedule. So there was, there was a willingness to consider change in several cases, but there wasn't, people weren't clamoring for it necessarily, so we should take that under consideration. The difference between parents and teachers were that they were less excited about the particular model of starting, of having school on Wednesday and Thursday before Labor Day, and they were more excited about moving to the 8:30 time. That, that was actually their strongest. If, if, if middle sex, if all middle sex schools do the same, 62% felt very strongly, and 17% were neutral. So really, very small opposition for that one, from parents, and that was, that was the only real difference, I think. Those were the differences with parents and teachers, what I saw.
Maybe just one slight, I think not everybody was necessarily clear that everybody would be going to 8:30, or everybody would going, be going to that window between 8 and 8:30. So that's, that's just a slight nuance for people to think about.
Okay. Mr. Henner.
At 8:30, we're talking secondary school, am I correct?
Middle and high school.
If that's the time chosen.
Yes, yes. That was, that was.
The, yes.
So that will have a ripple effect on the middle school and the, and the elementary school, am I correct?
It's middle school too. And then, yeah, middle school and.
Middle school and high school.
And high school, I think is the question.
But the elementary won't be?
No, the elementary, and then open question about sixth grade.
They already start later.
Yeah.
They start around, they would be starting, what time do they start right now?
8:10.
Yeah, 8:10.
So they, the elementary would be starting earlier than the high school, if we move to that kind of a model.
Yeah.
Yes.
Right, right.
Good luck with that one.
Yes, Mr. Schlichtman.
In the report on the parent caregiver survey, I just want to state sort of a beef with the language.
Okay.
In that it, it's written, however uncommon, parents are strongly in favor of merging the February and April Vacation.
Yeah.
It was mentioned by parents 64 times.
Yep.
Well, that, that's four point, 4% of the people responding wrote that in, probably after they made the response, and the merged February vacations was unpopular by 50%. So I wouldn't say that's a strongly.
Got it.
Favor.
I do mention, yes.
It was the most common, but I think that, that, there's no strongly.
Got it.
Favor there.
Got it, you're right, you're right, yeah. That was poor language on my part, yeah. Okay. So the next, we are now at CIAA.
CIAA, you've basically dealt with what we did.
District goals.
Early with the district goals.
Excellent. Facilities.
Vote on June 14th.
Yes.
Vote. Head out.
That's the report.
My daughter voted today.
Excellent, excellent. Yes, you can vote.
Yes.
You can vote now.
Yep.
You can go to the town hall and vote right now.
Just remember, tomorrow they close at noon.
Yes, that's right. Yes.
And Monday, it stops at noon as well.
Yes, the day before the vote, it always stops.
Oh, you can vote after noon, absentee.
Only on Friday, noon in Monday.
Thank you.
If you're going to absentee ballot.
Yes. Policies and procedures. Mr. Henner.
We met, we are, we did not, we have nothing to bring forward tonight. We will continue to look into the homework policy and handbooks to see the compatibility or lack of. I am in charge with getting job descriptions and surveys on secretaries, school committee secretaries. The biggest time we spent was on school committee agenda, talking about formatting and topics. Some of them were talking, this is still discussion, folks, talking about subcommittee of the whole, set informal discussions maybe at the beginning of a meeting, and set the second part for policies and stuff. Different retreats, possibly two or three during the year, with specific agenda items in the beginning, maybe the superintendent. First meeting in September, we'll pull all these together, and the additional ones that were given to us tonight, and report back to the whole with recommendations.
Great. Okay. So, did you where am I at? Warrant.
Task force.
School and Roman task force, yes. Do we have anything?
Vote on Tuesday.
Vote on Tuesday.
14.
Yes, indeed.
Please.
Warrant committee.
Vote on Tuesday.
Vote on, no. All, everyone get paid.
Thank you. Any school liaison reports? No? Yes, Mr. Arx?
I don't have a school liaison report, but I did attend the last meeting of both the Wellness Committee and the Arlington Youth Health Safety Coalition. The Wellness Committee was last week.
Should be the liaison.
I attended their June meeting. That is like, an awesome meeting. It's like all, you know, it's food, it's everything from food service to nursing, to adult education, summer programs, and at the end, they did ask, you know, what they could do for us. And one thing I really wanted to understand, and I was kind of hoping they could put it together next year, would be a comprehensive, I would really love to understand K-12, what our health curriculum is, and what we teach, and when we teach it. I know that it's piecemeal, and that, you know, some gets done by the Great Body Shop, and some gets done by here and there, and so I said, you know, if you could really lay that out for us, I for one would be very interested in understanding that, and understanding who teaches it.
Okay, so that's potentially a future agenda item.
I know that we're a district, we don't have health.
Yep.
Teachers, but, you know, some PE teachers teach health, some nurses teach health, some, you know, whatever. So, I just wanted to better understand that, so hopefully they will be coming in, or can do that for us in the fall. This afternoon, I attended the last of the Arlington Youth Health Safety Coalition meetings for the year, and it was mostly just a wrap-up of what they've done this year, and thinking about things that they will be doing next year. They've had a very successful year this year, in, and we talked a little bit about the survey results. There will be a parent forum on the survey results, not only from the students, but also the parents, kind of, what do parents think about kids and what they're doing, and kind of what are students.
We haven't seen those results.
Yeah, and kind of, like, putting those together in an interesting.
Do you know if they are available? Are they, are both of those available? I know the students ones we've seen, but.
I don't know if they're available yet. But, so that was interesting, it was, we talked about some of their initiatives for next year, and, and kind of what they're up to, so.
Great. And I just realized that this should actually, we should actually change this to liaison reports in the future.
Oh, yeah.
Right, instead of school.
All liaison.
All liaison reports, right, to just, yeah. Yeah, Mr. Henner.
I attended the program for special needs parents coming in from fifth grade to sixth grade at Odison last night. There were, well, close to 40 parents there, it was well-attended. The program was, the assistant principal, principal, and the special education director, is that the term?
Coordinator.
Coordinator, thank you. Were there to answer questions, talked about initially about the programs, they took them on a tour of the building, and then came back and answered questions. I thought it was well-done, well-received. There's, as all parents, there's still anxiety. One of the things that was brought up about having their students tour the building ahead of time before the first day of school, there's some sort of program that's there, but it's been booked.
Oh, yeah.
Real tight, so I'd, I'd ask you to, if there's any way to broaden that.
I have one.
Or any way for.
Specifically for them.
Yeah, well, it is, there is, there is, there is something already in place.
Yes.
But it's, it's, it gets, it got filled up.
It fills up every year.
And it's not targeted to.
So, potentially, if possible, to expand it enough to cover everybody, to, but it was, it was a compliment to the staff that ran it, and to the parents that were there, it was really well-done.
Right. Any other announcements? Yes, Mr. Henner.
Real quick. I would like to, and I apologize, I don't have the student's name, I will get them to the superintendent to ask her to put it in her next newsletter. There were four people that came to the veterans, the memorial program that we had, a quartet. They were extraordinary. They were just, they were fantastic. Yesterday, at Rotary, five students from here, sophomores, and I think there was one junior who had attended Ryla, which is Rotary Youth Leadership Program for the Weekend. I was just so impressed with their presence, and they came before a group of old fuddy-duddies and really presented themselves really well. Compliments to the staff and to their parents, and I will get their names to you too. Thank you.
Other announcements?
I think there's an election on Tuesday, June 14th. That everybody should vote yes.
I encourage you to go vote.
Please.
Please vote. Okay, future agenda items that we might want to consider in the fall, we've heard some things tonight? Yes, Mr. Henner.
Mentioned before, and I did with policy, the idea to possibly retreat or something, just so that we're all on the same page with the superintendent.
Superintendent's, right.
Of the evaluation.
Yeah, so, so actually, we talked about, and just to clarify, changing the way we do things a tiny bit, to add a couple more retreats potentially, and also potentially at the beginning of some meetings, every once in a while when needed, to have in a less formal discussion among the whole school committee. Hopefully, those will help us do our job better.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to have to move this time, I think.
No, no.